Ready?
Yep.
We call it a meeting, special meeting of the Fire Commission Order and seven oh two. Fudge, mention to the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, clear and just as plural.
All right, okay. First item on our agenda is consideration of approval of the special meeting minutes from January eighteenth. Um, we do need to amend those. In. Yeah, the, from the original, there was a motion. Recommend the budget new amount of a hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred fifty dollars from the original amount of a hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. Following the thirteen thousand, it should be thirteen hundred in reductions. We'll take a, a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so carry. All right, the next item on our agenda is consideration of the Bethel Fire Department's fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget presentation. What Chief McCollum presenting budget and then, uh, do it and questions, answer.
Well, I think you've all had a copy to lose, perhaps?
Yeah.
If you just want to run through it and see where the, the differences are, uh, equipment and supplies. You know, there's two that are the main driver of the increases, which is the equipment and supplies, which is mainly, you know, fire, fire, uh, bucket. Uh, we have to supply two full sets to every certified firefighter. That's not a choice. It's, it's not a choice I can make and it's not a choice anybody can make because that's the law. It's just the way it is. Um, other than that, there's really not a lot of increases in that account. You know, I went up, I went up slightly on, on some minor things because through this year, I found like we had a camera that failed. Instead of buying a brand new one, we sent it out to see if it could be repaired. It was repaired, but it cost a little over seven hundred dollars to repair it. But that camera, Chief, I believe you bought it way back. It was extremely expensive because it was state of the art. It was like one of the first ones out. And, uh, like I said, we were able to repair it. You know, I was told that it costs over ten thousand dollars originally to buy it. So I would pay to just shell them. So anytime we can repair anything, we try and do it. So we have, we have all the various things in here for replacement or repairs to appliances that's needed. Uh, that's been a lot of nozzles, nozzle work and things like that that was done. We had two nozzles that failed during testing this past year that we were able to repair instead of buying new. Um, and you know, and that's our mantra. Uh, you know, if we can repair it, we want to repair it before it could place. It just, you know, it's, it's more cost effective for the fact that the town of Apple. And it seems to be quicker for us too, because if you got to order something, you know, you're waiting, especially post-COVID, you don't know when it's coming. You know, we're, we're in a situation right now. We're still waiting on twelve brand new Scott Airbags for over two years now. The delivery date now is supposed to be July. We're hoping that actually comes true. Now, that money is encumbered. It's been encumbered. It's there. Uh, but again, I'm sure that's driving Brad a little crazy because, you know, instead of account for all that money, Brad is pay it out. We don't. Uh, so repairs and testing of thermal cameras is needed. That's what I was just talking about. Various sensors and gas test canisters for meters is needed. We've replaced multiple sensors in the four gas meters. We do now have three, five gas meters, one on engine six, one on squad five, one on top one, which lets us use those after the fire is extinguished because that's the most dangerous time for firefighter in a structure when you're doing overhaul. You know, you gotta make sure that you can take your mask off when it's safe. You know, not before. And that's what these meters do. They do that one additional sense, you know, that, that gas to make sure it's safe for us to operate in there without a air company. Uh, the replacement of equipment, gear alterations, offsite cleaning is necessary throughout the air. Uh, that's worked out pretty well. Uh, the AV three thousand high temp face masks, we did twenty last year. I think we're down to like two left to issue. Um, we also got bags, special bag, carry bags for those. They're issued to individual firefighters. So there is a mask on the rig, but they have one that's fit to them, especially people like most of people in this room wearing glasses. You have this special glass fit inside the mask and it's your mask. Nobody else can use it. It's in your bag. So they all know they, they have that bag with them. They get on the rig. They take the mask off the SCV they're going to wear, put it aside on the bog house or wherever they can, and then use their mask. And they are responsible for cleaning their mask after and putting it back in service. Up to and including if anything happens to it, they need to report that to a chief officer right away so that we can get it taken care of. Very sized blades, a change for the saws is needed. That's pretty much steady where it was. Well, that's, that's worked out well. Uh, stationware uniforms, T-shirts, caps. That was something we, we added. We're looking at getting some long sleeve T-shirts, which we don't have a lot of those. It's all once you short sleeve and maybe some, some other things with that. Uh, the firefighting here, as I said, this is the big driver in this account. You know, everything now goes up post-COVID twice a year instead of once a year. Uh, I was just talking with, uh, our rep at AAA, when we get a lot of, uh, equipment. And I said to him, I said, you know, I'd just like to know where air bottles at right now. Air bottle right now, one gets damaged and I have to replace one. A thirty minute bottle is thirteen hundred and thirteen dollars. And that's with the discounts from New York State, the bid price over there. That's why we work with AAA a lot because they have a lot of things that are discounted because of bid price. Without the bid price, it's over sixteen thousand per bottle.
Sixteen hundred.
Right now.
Sixteen hundred.
I mean sixteen hundred per bottle right now.
I know.
Okay.
Yep.
The increase in July is going to go up to, uh, thirty, it's thirty-five hundred.
It's jumping.
I mean, I mean, I mean, fifteen hundred.
Fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen hundred. It's going up to fifteen hundred a bottle. So, we were able to do something recently, a chief engineer helped me on it where we got bottles from a neighboring department that still are using them. They're all, they all have at least twelve years of viability for two hundred dollars a piece. So instead of going out and buying ten brand new bottles, we got those. They've all, you know, they've all been maintained and we're to the good there. I'm going to spend two thousand instead. You know, so that's a big deal. We may be able to get more. Um, we're still talking about that. Uh, the rope equipment, the four thousand dollars in there, that's to finish up the last bits of stuff that we need for squad five and anything we may need for the cold water and ice rescue. Um, we did just get several throw bags with the, the rope that floats for those suits. Um, that's something that Stony Hill and Bethel are working together on. Stony Hill got suits they, they didn't have before. And, uh, we have, it means eight suits. Eight suits on several different rigs. And it's important because that could just be a simple hole. They're out in that suit in a flood here in town. And it keeps our guy or gal dry while they're trying to help people with whatever they need to help with. Uh, the repair and replace the antels is needed. You know, that's just a, a minor amount that's there. We have stuff break throughout the year. You know, if you need new handle or you need, you need to replace something that's damaged beyond repair, we can replace it. The firehouse maintenance has stayed basically the same. The thing you'll see that's different is the annual kitchen hood cleaning, which I had told the chairman, I didn't realize the guy's coming twice a year. Not once a year. So it's, it's five hundred dollars a pop when he cleans the hood in the kitchen. He does it every six months. So that's a thousand dollars. Uh, every, everything else here, all these other line items stay the same. Vehicle maintenance is also up because everything's up with vehicles, you know? You need to replace parts. You need to make repairs. It's costing us more money. Um, one thing I had said last year too is, uh, I don't particularly agree with the, like the climate event, annual cleaning, the first testing and service, the flow testing, um, the air compressor service. I think that should be established in its own account. Because those are all things that I go out and we get prices for that are locked in. So they're all service contracts. And I really think that that should be broken out of this account. But, um, you know, it pretty much stayed the same. Um, the brake check, we got three rigs this year. We had two last year. That's the three-year brake check that they do where they, the truck goes and they take the tires right off and they inspect everything. They take pictures, they document what they find. That's just for the check. That's not if there's something wrong. If they have to replace something, that's extra money out of vehicle maintenance. So again, that's why, like I said, the account is up. That's another reason why. Um, the flow testing, the first equipment, the annual service of extinguishers is the same. The first and the flow testing and the annual, uh, testing of the hose, nozzles, ground ladders and the aerial. They're all in this account. They're all pretty much close to what they were last year or the same. Um, again, what they're looking at now is, uh, I was talking to, uh, him today, AAA, five percent as of July. So I've accounted for that with these things. Doesn't get used, it doesn't get used, but at least it's there. I'm not coming back to you and saying, hey, you know, this went up this much and I need, you know, a little bit here and a little bit there and a little bit there. It's, you know, uh, dues and education. The only thing that went up was the various courses throughout the year and attendance at conferences. We have multiple people right now taking courses. Uh, our goal with Sony Hill is to become self-sufficient. Every time you go to fire school, you have to have people trained and certified to a certain level. If we don't have that, they supply them and we all pay for them. Our people right now, I pay for the courses. None of our people charge any money. Writing this being done. Bethel, Stony Hill firefighters working together, certified, teaching these classes for no fee at all. That's pretty much unheard of. Cause usually fire departments that run it, they're paying the people that are running it and they're making a profit. We don't do that. We just look to run the courses between Bethel and Stony Hill as a joint venture and get the most bang for the buck. So I added two thousand dollars there because we do have more people going to school. And that, like I said, it's a good thing because eventually we will be totally self-sufficient with what we are required to have at like live burns and things like that. Otherwise we pay. I would rather just certify our people and our people are doing it free after that. You know, it's a payback for letting go of the course and we're paying for the course. I think that's a, a good use of tax return money. Um, the, the back account here at three oh six, we're now on the C N network, Connecticut Education Network. We're totally switched over now. Got rid of Comcast, which was, I, I know was driving Chief Baker crazy too. We talked about it all the time. Exorbitant bills we felt per month for what we were getting. So the delay in changing over to the network was that they had to get a program written to take care of the HVAC of both departments, which they did. And now we're on it. So that's less. I moved some money down to the physicals and the testing, which, you know, Mr. Chairman, you would, you would ask me previously if I had enough there. Um, with the influx of membership, I think that's a good, a good place to put it. Um, so there's been no money added to the account. It's just been shifted. These others are all things behavior healing and emergency reporting. Uh, Wells Fargo Financial is the copier. And that just gets paid. That's to, uh, the place down at our park. They supply that. Uh, behavior healing and emergency reporting are just the annual fees for what we have. I believe Stony Hill has the same, the same things. Uh, computers and technology services. I made a big push for laptops for all the officers and to replace all the computer equipment in the offices, which was done. This is just to support anything we may need that's small. I mean, bigger than that, I will have to come to you gentlemen and say, look, we had this happen. And we're gonna have to do this, but everything's virtually what a year, year and a half old now. And we've had no issues. So we're just using it for supporting that stuff. The only thing I have to get is carrying cases for the laptops. Some people have their own. I'd rather we supply the same case to everybody and it's owned by the gentleman. All those computers in case anybody doesn't know. There's a back door antenna. They can get in, he needs to, and he can shut it up. And he does occasionally check. He and I talk all the time. He checks to make sure that what's being done on those is what's allowed. And everybody, that was explained to everybody when they were issued. And they're issued to one person, each to one person, all the laptops. So there should only be one user on each laptop. In the capital, you'll see, uh, truck one is a seven-year tire replacement. They come due in July. Brad asked me just to get a price. I did that. It came out, I, um, I put seven thousand in there. It came out to six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety cents. So it was pretty close. So that'll be done, you know, in July when those tires expire, they have to come off and go away and they put new tires on. That's ten buyers with the related work they have to do to take them off. Take them off the mounts, mount them tires, put them back on, et cetera. Right? The replacement of aging first equipment on squad five is one full set of redrawal tools. Uh, we brought this up several years ago. We wanted to replace everything all at once. And we suggested arcapons. That didn't fly. The problem with the tools is they're aging now and as they age out, there's no support for them. So I already lost one ram. There's another ram that we've already been told that if something happens to it, it's done. There's no support for it to, to repair it. Um, this will open up one full compartment on the rig because there's stuff in two compartments. The new, the new equipment will fit in one compartment. You can see by, by the estimate, it comes with the mounting brackets. Those are all the walk away battery operated tools, just like we have on the rescue truck. Now they'll give us a second set. We have one on the rescue truck. We would have one on squad five. Get rid of all the line tools. Get rid of two reels that also add in weight to the truck and a motor with pump on it that's adding weight to the truck. The other thing I like is that there's no problem with fluid getting on somebody or getting in their eyes or getting on the gear. Because the line tools, of course, have fluid and all those lines. We've had incidents and I know Stony Hill said that incidents through the years where we've had several people out there go to the hospital, get their eyes flushed because human nature, you're doing stuff and you don't think and you wipe up here and you get it in your eye and you gotta go get flushed. It's the only way to get it out. And I would say that those two reels and the motor could probably be advertised right away. There's still people using them. They could probably be sold. But the line tools, like I said, they are slowly aging out. And he tells us every year what's supported and what's not. So I'm sure when he comes this year, you know, he's going to go through the same thing and tell us if there's more stuff that's no longer supported by first. The Paratek rescue tools. That's the last bit of Paratek that's needed for our set. Stony Hill has also been buying the Paratek. So we establish one big set for the town of Apple through both departments. And like I said, what we have left there on the paper, which is, uh, I estimated twenty-five thousand is a little less than that. We'll complete our set and then it would only be odds and ends down the road that we could put in the regular system. So these, these things are on here and I'm sure Brad will pull them into the capital. And make sure to get estimates on all of it so that you have real time estimate as they are. So what kind of question here? What do you need?
See. We're going to have to present stand on. We're all safer.
All right, who wants to go first?
Hey, no matter. We can go. Want to go back down in order? We're going to reverse order back up.
Um, I got, I got a little less. Okay. Yeah, let's leave the cabin for last, but, uh, let's, let's start in reverse order because I have the least amount of questions going reverse. Going in reverse, I guess.
For the last six, you started the last.
We'll, we'll start with the, uh,
Real.
Three oh six.
Okay.
So does anybody have any questions that you?
Hmm. I want three oh six. Three oh three. I do.
All right.
Uh, the copier, sixteen hundred bucks a month?
Nothing told by me.
Well, I, I understand that. I think, well, well, it kind of is because.
No, it's not. It's a huge contract. Rich could tell you through the town of Apple. They're all through the town of Apple.
You go out and buy a five hundred dollar copier every month.
Fire department has no say. I have no.
Well, you don't have, I mean.
I have no say.
This is, this is a lease agreement. The, the town, the town leases all of the drop years for everybody. And basically, I think basically they, it's the cost of the machine, which they replace like every five years or so.
Uh, they just replaced it last year, actually. Yes.
Plus, you know, it's, it's a certain.
Yeah, there's a counter.
Cost per company.
There's, there's counters on it. You're allowed X amount and then over that they're charging you more.
Well, just to go back to that, you have the, the copier is, uh, sixteen hundred dollars a month, but if you add all that up, it's only twenty-two thousand. So is it a monthly charge with a total of sixteen hundred dollars, Chris?
No, I, I think.
You think that's sixteen hundred? Well, then your bottom line then, wrong.
No, I believe it's sixteen hundred a year.
Year.
Oh, yeah.
That's a big difference.
But I have no.
That's much more powerful.
Yeah, no, I, I saw the same thing.
That's much better. You have to make a hundred and ninety-two thousand copies of that. It's, it's staples to make that work. Yeah.
It's a usual lease with the town. It's, we have no say in what.
Yeah, we all get that.
It's, it's, you and it goes there.
We get it. It's yearly. It's not monthly. So it's presented though, you know?
It's a monthly bill you get, but it's the, the, the dollar amount is.
I actually usually don't see those. They just, because it's a group thing, they just go upstairs and they pay that for everybody.
So then why should it come out of the, the firehouse budget?
It does.
If it's, it just, it should be one bill and let the town of Bethel pay for it.
Well, they have a.
That's one item left out of your budget.
Because they were broken down into different accounts because every account has a different copier, different size copier. Like if you go down to the office down the hall, you got a huge copier in there that copies collate staples.
Yeah, I can understand.
Ours doesn't do that.
Right.
Okay. And I think Stony Hills is probably basically the same thing that we have.
You said Wells Fargo is the copier.
Wells Fargo is the copier.
So one, one of the issues is Chief is, it looks like, it looks like it's about a hundred and ten dollars a month. He's, I'm just looking at your year-to-date. The problem is, is you're paying it out of your firehouse maintenance account when you're budgeting for it in your professional services account.
Yeah, there's also paper you gotta get and supplies.
You're, I'm saying you're budgeting for the copier lease in your professional services account. But you're paying for it out of your firehouse.
Right. It came out of the long account. It took care of that.
Okay. Cause it hasn't been, it has not been charged all year to the professional services.
I didn't realize that.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
But that's, that's what it is. It's just.
It looks like.
For it and the service for it.
I'm just looking at the charges that, you know, I see here for Wells Fargo. I got a hundred and ten ninety-five, one ten ninety-five, one eighty-three.
Yeah, it's different. Like I said, it's different.
It's running about a hundred and ten dollars a month.
Yeah. It's, it's totally different for the capital domain, which I don't know. I guess they read that through the internet or something. I don't.
I, I don't know. When I was chief, they used to call and ask somebody to go.
Yeah, they don't, yeah, they don't do that anymore.
Do it now.
Yeah, I think it's for the internet because they just send the bill.
Anybody else? Are we good with that?
The three oh.
On the three oh six.
Nothing else on three oh six for me.
All right. The one question I had was on the, um, on the behavioral health.
Mm-hmm.
You had sixteen, sixteen hundred.
Behavioral healing.
Fifteen hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, I was looking at your year-to-date. It looks like the actual cost is nine eleven for this year.
Yeah, but I'm anticipating increase.
Six hundred dollar increase.
Listen, everything's.
I mean, that's.
No. The other thing is.
Thirty, thirty-five.
It's also, if you use it more, apparently you get another bill, which I didn't know. And that's Bethel, Stony Hill, both have them. I don't have a problem matching it to Stony Hills. I have no problem matching it.
The OSHA compliant physicals and testing.
Yes, the testing is.
Is that for the fit test too?
That's, yes.
And they had a N ninety-five test?
Yes, sir. And, and it includes the spirometry.
Spirometry. So it does.
Everything.
So how many members does that cover? Uh, everybody?
Oh, well, everybody that has to be tested. So you have EMS members that get tested to the N ninety-five.
Right, yeah.
Then you have firefighters like us. They get tested for all three.
That's, that's why I'm asking what that all includes.
Okay. It, it depends on the, the individual and their like, you know, familiar, like their MOS and marker, right? You know, what they do.
What, what was that last year?
Actually very, very successful to do it that way too, because we put it all together.
Chris, what was it in your budget last year for that? For the OSHA compliance physicals?
It was thirteen, I have to tell you.
All right.
Third, uh, I just, like I said, I just moved some money from the C N down to here. It was a thirteen five, I think I had. But you know, like we got four more.
Right. And I know you're.
Four more guys that have just got certified. So they're going to be held to that standard. So while you're playing ahead, you have to play it. You know, Stony Hills got a five, four guys here to insert it on. So that's the same thing. You have to play it ahead.
So the only, the only cost I see associated with that year-to-date is, uh, five, five thousand, twenty-five dollars.
There's also.
Griffin Hospital.
There's also MES. So MES did the mask test.
I don't see that.
And then that's, yeah, it's there. It's there somewhere, probably under shipments. It was another seventeen, eighteen, maybe.
A hundred and seventy dollars.
No, no.
There's seventeen hundred.
It was like, it was like seventeen or eighteen, hundred. And then you still have.
Seventeen, okay.
To like dock in the box, we're paying for that.
Actually, one of those, one of those seventeen hundreds credited back out.
I think they double billed us actually.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly. Seventeen.
Right. And then what's going to happen this year is that Griffin Hospital was so impressed by that night. They were built there together. They actually will come plug the machine. So they're going to do everything. It's going to be one entity coming in and doing all the testing for everything. Just coming here, which should be good. So we'll get one bill for everybody that gets tested.
So to me, it looks like your, your actual cost is about sixty-eight hundred dollars. You've been asking for fifteen thousand.
There's also physicals in when I just said, if we have to send people for physicals, then I got paid for that, just like you did as chief, right? We got to pay for it. Dock in the box. That's where they go.
I, I don't see any of those. That's why I'm asking.
There's been some.
You've only been, you only got a half of your budget really into, into it right now. So.
Mm-hmm. They have to go by their anniversary date to get their business.
Um, and then the only other question I had on that account was the, um, emergency reporting. My chief Baker and, uh, Tom Gallagher indicated they're, they're moving away from emergency reporting.
If we do, you'll need this in there for whoever we move to, till we know what the cost is, and I don't know what the cost is, to be honest with you. So it's just there, because that's what we're using right now.
What did, what did they say they were going to?
They were doing something to split it all up.
We were, we had discussed changing, but that hasn't become official yet.
They, they led us to believe that it was official and the cost was being split three ways between the two departments and the fire marshals.
Not till I see paperwork that tells me how much it costs. Said simple, I'm sure you gentlemen would be the same way, you wanna see what's gonna cost, right?
But that's, um, yeah, I remember that conversation, cuz.
Tom explained it.
He explained it.
And I'm okay with changing, but I need to know what it's gonna cost.
What did John have as, I don't have his one.
I think he had it encompassed in that, uh. It was in this added, uh, annual cost of fires managing the software and the incident alerting system. He had that, it was all encompassed in that, it was, he asked for forty-five hundred dollars, but that included some other stuff. Uh, just, just so we're clear, the emergency reporting line is, i- if you do switch over, that, that's just.
That's why it's there, because I have to account for it. I don't wanna come to you guys later and go, hey, we switched and I took that out, so now I need this much money to pay for it.
Any other questions on the professional services account? Do we wanna make any financial change to the financial services account or keep it as requested? I'll put them in a data motion.
Motion to, uh, keep the three oh six professional services at twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
I second that.
I, I have the request being twenty-two hundred thirty-three, oh wait, yes, I'm sorry, twenty-two eight. And you seconded it? All in favor of keeping the professional services account at twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars as requested by. Opposed? Alright, moving on to the, uh, three oh one dues and education. Any questions on that? The only, the question I have chief is, I, I asked this last year and. Ask it again this year, only because you asked for forty-four hundred dollars for eight gates for live burns. I only see one bill for this entire year so far.
No, there's been more than one bill, because we share that with Stony Hill, so they paid for some, we paid for some.
I think he put in for eight also, I think he might be, he might be double hitting that.
Yeah, I know, yeah, well, that's kinda my point.
Because I, I switched from those weekends to, uh, actually, uh, days during the week also. And we go to both Fairfield and New Haven Fire Schools.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at your dues and education account and you have one bill to Fairfield Fire School, four hundred and fifty dollars. There's nothing, nothing built from New Haven.
There's, there's one that, there's one that's coming in, it hasn't.
Stony Hill has one bill from New Haven.
They're very slow. A lot of those bills have to be, but. Brain has been done. Yeah, they're gonna catch up.
And he's just got a, a long song about.
But here's one, um. Twenty-three.
Right.
New Haven, six hundred and sixty-five.
But the problem is that both New Haven and Fairfield also change their administrations, so we know we got bills coming. We didn't go to fire school once.
Well, did we go eight times?
I believe six, six times, we went six so far.
I remember a lot of them canceled, but I don't have any.
Uh, we went six so far.
I think between the.
But also, you gotta understand, it also includes the light first for fire one and fire two that we run, so we pay for those. And as I said, with Stony Hills involved with those, we share also. But we are waiting on a lot of those for these schools, they just, they haven't come yet. Sure, once they get into it, all of a sudden, we'll be sending us a go.
I think between now and next month when we meet, if, if you, if.
We can make an.
Get those.
We can make an inquiry.
You know, show the, show the commission.
Yeah.
Those, those invoices will date, you know?
I'm sure we can make an inquiry and say, look.
That we're not.
The commission's looking for them, we need.
That we're not duplicating.
Just to show everybody that we're doing our due diligence, you know?
That's fine, so.
And then, and then I just ask, I mean, is, is twenty thousand dollars, I mean, is for various courses and conferences, I mean. A good number, I mean.
I, I think for right now it is, I mean.
I'm just looking at your new education for a year and you've, you've spent under ten thousand a year so far.
Yeah, and Emmitsburg is, Emmitsburg is coming up, so there's gonna be people that wanna go to Emmitsburg. And there's people right now in courses that I'm just starting to pay for now. And there's the FDIC that I allow officers to go to out in Indianapolis. And that cost is split, we don't pay for the whole thing, but we certainly pay for some of that for them. Because that's a benefit to us and the town of Apple and both departments, you know, for people to go.
What, what does that include, Chris?
The FDIC is the part of our short for the conference, it's an annual conference, you know, about that in April. In Indianapolis, and what it does is it allows all the instructors to remain up to date on all the new standards and guidelines. It also, uh, pretty much, it's also a trade show, so it gives you a good feel on cost, especially the cost of really to support training. Different devices are coming out, and, uh, and give you an example, uh, which is the, uh. Connecticut Fire Cat was doing a winter, uh, training class in February. And they're introducing a new training device up there, FLAIM, playing, they bought, and it talks. It's an interactive thing, where they put a vest on you, they heat some, and give you a nozzle and a hose, it simulates the weight. And the reaction force and things like that, with the idea that hopefully some of the regional departments would buy stuff like that. So you're really waiting for months and months and months to use that device, you know, to enhance your own local training. So by going out to that conference out there, you get to see where all that stuff is originating, it's the number one conference pretty much in the world. Uh, but it's expensive, I, I normally pay for my entire cell, which is about twenty-four hundred dollars a year. And I rarely ask for money from the town, at some point in time, I gotta, I'm gonna have to do that, and, um. If you wanna make a good comparison to that, is the fire company, so you can open this through, pays for the EMS conferences. I have the, the corporate side. A dozen people there, that's thousands.
Six hundred and fifty dollars a piece.
Yeah.
Depending on when we register.
It was over ten thousand dollars.
How many people go to this conference?
We have, the bottom line is, we haven't hit all these conferences yet, they start now, and they go right to the bar, at the end of the. EMS conferences a dozen or more, the, the fire conference bill's always gone. And I let the other guys know that, that they're, they can go, but they have to come to, you know, through the proper process to request to go. Could I, could I add one more thing, chief?
Sure.
The fire school costs, just tell you what's covered for that, right? I just signed a contract with the, with your current school for a class of money up north. And, uh, it's, it's a thousand dollars minimum for four hours now. And he made, the director made it very clear to me that if you stay past the four hours, he said, I'm gonna charge you the minimum. Four hours for the rest of the day, even if it's only an hour, just the way it works. It's three hundred dollars an instructor, you have to have two, so the program I have has about fifteen people in it. So if I go past the, the four hours that I contracted for, he's gonna throw another six hundred on top of it, I know it's gonna go sixteen hundred dollars. For a one-day use of the fire school, that's gonna start now to spread throughout all the fire schools. Um, and it has to do with the OSHA standards that are out there, um, stuff that Dave, Sue and I have gone through in the past year now. For the fire two requirements, for both managing the fire event at the fire school. And having a fire two instructor on each floor in which an ideal H atmosphere is, is conducted. That being a live burn on each floor, so now we have to hire firefighter two instructors that cover that. If we don't, as Chris said earlier, we have to hire them from the fire school, three hundred dollars a pop for four hours. So these fire school costs now, I mean, it looks like there's a lot more money there, it's, it's something we can't control, it's being forced on us. So, we're not like adding a buzzer or anything, if anything, we maybe, may not have enough in there. So this is coming, so you look at six live burning a year, and I, I think we have eight in there. Cover the fire one class, the fire two classes, the OSHA required live burns, you know, we're looking at a serious amount of money. And, uh, we can't control it, I, I was astounded when he said, Billy, pump, sign your contract. Actually, my, my four hour contract was twelve hundred, and Mr. Clausen, there for another six, that was about eighteen hundred, and, uh. It's, uh, literally just for four hours and potential going over that, so, just to let you know it's coming on. This is, this is.
And when is this gonna start?
Starting now.
It is already starting.
So, so like the three hundred dollars for those instructors, Phil was just talking about the fire two instructors. I got people in fire two right now, we're paying just under five hundred for them with their book to take the course, so. They go to fire school for us twice, and me on one of those floors, we got our money back. And, and the live burns, we did six plus, what Bill's telling you, I don't know if you're understanding, plus the two. The two, the two portions that were run, those live burns were covered by us, we have our own people in those like, in those classes, also fire one and fire two. So, there's our rate, I'm, I'm sure Stony Hill is right there too.
So the, these fire one and fire two classes you're running with live burns, are these being opened up to outside students, outside the departments?
Yeah.
And are they being charged, is there?
Yes, they are.
So there's revenue, so there's revenue coming in.
We're putting the revenue back in the program, that's correct. So they.
Revenue should be covering the cost of the live burns.
What they're being charged for, if I can speak, it's very, they have to buy their own books, we do not supply their books. We do not supply their course material, they have to do all that. Let's make very clear to the neighboring departments that your students, you have to supply your students with all that training material. We're not doing that. At all, and then, there's a little bit left there that they give us. That goes for all the, helps us supplement all the food and drink that all the students use, and it's all comfortable. There's a little more to that to achieve, they have to pay for their own testing.
Yeah, testing, all testing for us then.
And the other thing is, if we have equipment, most of the time, we have needs for a group based on standards that we don't have here. So by bringing in the outside departments, we can access the equipment that they have to support our program that we don't have. If not, if we had to send our students out for fire one, it's about eighteen hundred dollars a student, and we're, we're doing it for free. In conjunction with Stony Hills, and, uh, if we had to send ten kids out for fire one, anyhow, we're getting eighteen thousand.
The budget's fine.
And, and that would eat up our entire training budget, and that's, you know, uh, by a case of Stony Hill, by a case of Apple. And, uh, we're, we're gonna get a lot more than that.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not opposed to opening it up to outside people, I've actually, I would actually encourage that, but it should. The revenue from opening up to outside students should cover the cost of the course, it should cover the cost of your live burns, it should cost.
What do you, what do you typically charge? You told us what, you don't charge them for, you didn't tell us what, yeah, you do charge them.
The charge, charge that we have is the, they have to pay their own testing fees. As Chris said, and all, all the training material is the same, you know, that textbook now is, is, uh, about a hundred and sixty dollars. You know, what to support, what to go with it, um, in addition to that, any handouts that we give, you have the DOT. Uh, emergency response guide, you know, to go with it, my classes we use, and I have book as well. Then the study guides to go with it, where you get the Dr. Ben Hurst book, which is the testing book. Or any of the support books to go with the actual textbook, um, versus all the textbooks together run just about four hundred dollars a student. You're picking up that cost, but, what I was reading to earlier is that. By bringing in outside students, again, using their specialized equipment, when we go to live burns, most of the time, we ask them to supply the apparatus. So the fuel and any cost and involvement to use of their apparatus, especially specialized apparatus like the ladder truck. You know, to drag our ladder truck out of town, um, they're picking up that cost, yes, supplying the driver, and we. So it, it really balances out pretty good, plus there always are mutual aid partners. So we're, we're developing a positive relationship with the surrounding towns, the, the people in our classes start to know us, our equipment. We start to know them and their equipment, and as you can tell from the fire which was had down here, Greenwood Avenue, it's a lot, a lot of people in. Meshed well, cuz we all work together now, both, not only as fires, but training.
Totally understand it, but I still don't, I still, how much you charge a student, I know what they're paying, I know the four hundred bucks.
We charge where the, where the costs are, um, that we incur, and it would be, as Chris said earlier, uh, the food. Testing fees, um, what else?
The materials.
And, and the specialized materials, we may end up in a situation where we have to make, uh, go out and have copies made, you know, we gotta charge them.
Not with that sixteen hundred dollar machine, no way. Better make all those damn copies right there.
What does it cost? What do you charge? What's the dollar?
Works out to approximately, probably seven hundred fifty dollars a student.
At the most, yeah, right now.
But that's, but, but, well, I guess it's.
But that includes all the stuff.
Yeah, so what's the profit? Is there, is there profit? Is it, are you using that money to defer the cost of the school, the, your fees?
That's what I'm saying, we use it. In essence, you know, we're not paying anybody to teach the class. You know, from, from that concept, but, um.
Sure. So for the, the fire one class that is finishing up this week, um. The Danbury Fire Department and their volunteer side of their fire department, they did not get money approved for their training budget. To provide fire one for their volunteers, so the training captain for the Danbury Fire Department. Came to me, he knew that we were going to be running fire one, and he asked if we could add four or five students into our fire one. In exchange for using the Danbury Fire School, which you cannot live burn there, but you can do, um, you can use it for other things. Uh, to balance the costs, so we have four Danbury students in the class. Or five, five Danbury students in the class, and we have gone to the Danbury Fire School. Three different times for different various things, we had a mock live burn the week before we actually did our live burn. We, um, had their practicals there this past Sunday, we went there for one other thing, oh, ladders. And, um, I don't know what their typical cost for using their fire school would be, but I'm sure. It would have balanced out, you know, if that would have cost us money. And it probably would have been more than what we would have charged, if we would have charged five hundred or even seven fifty for each of those students.
It would have been about six, between six to seven hundred dollars.
You have to have somebody there, cuz that's what I.
From, from their side.
And the, the Danbury Fire School typically requires, if you're going to go there and you're an outs, outside of a, a. A Danbury company, you, um, either have to hire a Danbury ambulance to stand by the fire school. And pay for that, or you have to provide medical staff. So every time we've been there, we have brought our, uh, medical emergency response vehicle with two E M Ts. To be there in case somebody had an emergency, so we've, we've avoided that cost as well.
To be specific, I want to say, depending on which fire school you go to, the, the costs vary. We try to go to the cheapest one, trade services. There's a lot more horse trading that goes on too, just to make it work, especially when you start hitting a thousand dollar level stuff. We know that we're gonna come back and the boss is gonna be honest about the cost, cuz we know that, he knows that you're gonna be honest about the cost. So whether you go to New Haven or Fairfield or Danbury or Litchfield, I, I wish the county schools, so the costs are, are, are varied. And, and, and now they're getting, um, to the point where it's getting very expensive. Um, we're trying to do what we can to stay within the budget.
Alright, alright, I think we can move on from the dues and, okay, so I just wanna make one more statement on that. Um, I, I know you've been working towards it a lot more this year than we have. Um, I I know you've been working towards it a lot more this year than we have ever in past years. I'd like to see a lot more training between the two departments happening, between Buffalo and Stony Hill. I mean, between the two departments, you're asking for thirty seven thousand dollars in in training for various courses. I I know we're doing a lot more training together. I'd like to see even more.
We're pushing for it.
So we have a motion to to fund the three oh one account?
Make a motion to refund three account three oh one in the amount of twenty six thousand dollars.
All in favor of fu- funding the three oh one account in the amount of one to six thousand dollars?
I, I.
Opposed? So carry. Vehicle maintenance. That's a big jump.
Yeah, the big driver is maintaining everything, unfortunately.
So Chief, why do you have? Air compressor service testing under vehicle maintenance? Shouldn't that be that's in firehouse maintenance?
Well, Commissioner, that's what I brought up originally when I stood up was that I feel all these things shouldn't. Be in a new account, should be in an account that's. The account, the account should basically read that. These are things that are done every year and they're. They're all. You know.
But it's still in the firehouse, it's still, it's still firehouse maintenance, whether you have that.
It's not firehouse maintenance. The air compressor is not firehouse maintenance. The annual service inspection of extinguishers isn't firehouse maintenance.
Some of it is.
You know, I would rather see these in as an account that's for service contracts, to be honest with you. I think that would be more transparent. If if all the service contract, the plan will be, you know, if you have that in an account, that's its own account, its own separate entity. That's just for service contracts. I think it would be much more transparent.
Yes, no, but right now you can't do that here. I think this is what you're.
Well, that's not, it's not up to me. I suggest, I'm suggesting it, and that's up to you gentlemen to say, hey, we'd like to see this done.
I I don't know that that's within our provision to create a new account, but I I do tend to agree that it does not. It does not belong in the vehicle maintenance account.
You know, I I put this stuff where I can put it, but I don't agree with where it is. That's what I'm telling you. I think it should be separate. All those things should be separate, you you know, I mean. I mean, the 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 testing, the annual testing, that that's all the service, that's all a contract. It's a contract I have to sign every year. They send me the paperwork, tell me this is for what it's gonna cost this year. If you agree with it, you gotta sign it and date it by this date and send it back to us.
No, we all, everybody understands that. I'm just talking about the two items.
No.
Air compressor and air compressor.
Now, the air compressor service you should also realize is is the. Air compressor that's in the building. Okay, and it's also testing the air on the rescue truck in the cascades. Okay, so it's testing the air that's generated by the air compressor. We have tanks in the building. And it's testing the air that's on the rescue truck. So there's a cascade system on the rescue.
So we're getting a tone, a tone is point. You're budgeting for it in your vehicle maintenance account.
Because that's where I was told to put it. That's, that's what I'm telling you. I I don't, I don't particularly agree with it. That's why I was told. Yes. Yeah, but that's what that all is, just so you know, the the air sampling is four times. It's not two, it's four times. So that's why it's noted there for you. And then he's got the uh, it's not just the sampling, but the major testing that he comes and tests it. And he also, like I said, he also does that on the rescue truck, which was never done before. We started that last year because we were like, you know what? That's great if we know the air is definitely coming from our compressor that's being tested. But if we're on the field. And the tanks get depleted and somebody else is gonna fill them. Are they testing their air?
Don't know that, I mean that.
We don't know. So.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with uh Tony that uh air compressor testing and the plan movement should be in the firehouse maintenance.
And I don't have a problem moving stuff, but that's not up to me, you know.
I I I think in the future we can have a conversation with the controller, ask him.
Well, I I mean, Chief Baker has his plan movement service in in firehouse maintenance. Um, I'm not seeing where his air compressor testing is right.
It doesn't mean it's in the right place either. Like I said, I think it should be.
Personally, I I I always had it in firehouse maintenance when I was the chief.
I mean, you got. Five to six accounts right here that could be in their own entity. Because they're all things that we have to sign paper for that says, yep, we agree to that price. Yep, you're gonna come in and do these things for us. Just something to think about. Cause it's kind of like, that kind of like also is pushes up the vehicle maintenance. You see what I'm saying? If you remove that. And it's in its own account, it's standalone, in its own account. Those are service contracts. You know? I mean, maybe it should be in professional services. Maybe it should be there. I don't know. But. It's a conversation I think you gentlemen should have. Let me know what you think.
Anything else, Chief?
Yeah, what's various repairs for twelve thousand dollars?
That's.
What's that?
That's tires, rims. We actually had a an unfortunate incident where a uh, I'm sure the chairman don't remember, where a. Tire and rim were damaged on engine six, and then he had to purchase a brand new rim and tire. That was right before I took over as chief, I believe. So that's there for for that. And that's there for the other vehicles when we have to put tires on them, like the Tahoe, um, the Chevy. You know, uh.
He wanted tires coming out of the capital.
Well, when he buy, when he buys tires for the whole truck.
For the truck, for the big trucks.
Wouldn't something like the unfortunate incident be an insurance claim?
I wasn't involved. I couldn't tell you, but I bet you that it didn't make the threshold of the town's deductible, which is very hot. So this is in there to allow for.
Let me talk, cause I'm still new at this, I think it's out these bunches now. So the sixty nine fifty three for the truck, for the tire, the uh.
Right, that's ten tires.
That's not taken, this is not considered taken out of this twelve thousand. So you're telling me that you're gonna keep twelve thousand dollars in this budget? For tires?
And and rims and anything else that happened, yeah, throughout the year. That's what's been in there, yeah. Last year, we actually took money out of that for the squad because somehow things got screwed up. And it, it didn't come out of C N R, it came out, it came out bad.
So right now, you're gonna replace the the tie, all the tires, cause it's ten year, I I I know, I'm just talking, I know. But this is gonna be taken out of here. So did squad five last year have all new tires?
Seven years, you gotta do it.
Correct. All right, so that's that. So the, how about engine six? When's that due?
Two years.
In two years, it's due.
Two years.
The rescue?
It's five years old. Uh, rescue's been done.
The rescue's been done.
Not due yet.
Okay, so what that's, what's that leaving? Uh, you're.
The tanker, which when I walked in the door, had eighteen year old tires on it, which I did immediately because it had eighteen year old tires on it.
But they were done when?
That was also ten tires because it's.
Correct, T and M X, yes.
So that was done three years ago. Like, it was.
Okay, so basically, when you do the the, your truck one, right, with all, all your tires, right?
Seven years.
Basically, all your vehicles up to date.
Well, yeah.
You're, you're fine with.
We don't have a plan.
New tires.
Brad knows we have a plan for when they need to be replaced. That's correct.
Right.
The problem is when I walked in the door. That wasn't the way it was going. Right, so we.
Well, I'm glad you you changed it, but.
Sure, you can speak on this.
Go ahead, please.
This also includes the E U B, the trailer, the portable pumps, stuff like that there. It's not just tire trucks get fixed. The E U B needs maintenance done for that every year. Tires, tires on the trailer have to be done every seven years.
We actually gotta do that.
That is a.
That has to be done, so the tires on the trailer have to be.
On the trailer.
So that's gonna come out of this twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's, it, it's costly, but it's minor compared to doing a whole truck. So I can just take it out of that and account for it, and it's there.
I just think go, going forward in future budgets, you should, you should probably spell it out a little, in a little more detail, how you're actually spending the money. Instead of just a, a generic twelve thousand dollar line.
That's why I'm asking, I don't know.
I mean, if it's vague and it's just, it's like, you know, it's like sending a kid to a candy store with twelve thousand dollars.
Well, I have to account for the way it's spent.
I know, yeah, I I I I know.
Nobody's questioning, you have to account for it, Chief, no.
We just like to. What is it being spent on? You know, now, we'd like to know now as opposed to waiting and seeing, oh, well, he spent a year, 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 year. By looking, you know, looking back.
I'm glad all the tires are being changed.
So in my, in my time so far, three plus years, we've replaced the tires on the Tahoe. We've replaced the tires on the Chevy. We're gonna replace the tires on the trailer. We've replaced the tires on utility one because. That, believe it or not, had mismatched tires on it that Dave and I found out. And I was like, this is not good. So we got the right tires on that. Everything is also by state bid, so although people are nearly tired because no matter where you go, state bid. And you wanna do state bid because unfortunately, here in the state of Connecticut, they don't have anything for the fire service except for the fires, which is really for the state. You know, that, that's why I was talking about triple A before, why I go over there, because that's Westchester County bid and New York State bid. Like those bottles, that's why they were much cheaper because they invoked those two bids and it brings the cost down. I wish they had that here in Connecticut. But again, that's a lobby thing that you guys could maybe take and I'll help you. And we go to Harper and say. You know, state Connecticut needs to establish this stuff.
Miss, I'll go back to the tires on the trailer, the tires on the trailer needed in this year's budget?
Yeah.
In this, but why don't you add those tires to the capital?
It's not, it's not a real big expense for the.
Well, but it it's all hires that are seven years. You replace those tires every seven years. And I think that's what the controller wants to do. Is to put those on a capital thing. You're not doing those.
Well, but I'm gonna replace those within this, within the budget I'm operating on right now. We planned for that.
In the budget that you're currently have?
Operating in now, yeah, yeah.
So that, so the uh tires for the trailer aren't coming out of this. It's coming.
I'll, I'll replace those out of this years.
Oh.
But I may have to replace the ones on the Explorer next year, now that. Trying to get rid of it for it. It's something a little bit newer.
Yeah, I would agree with Rich. I mean, all tires regardless of what they're on, what size they are, right, could be, I mean, in the, in the capital. And it should, we should have.
Can do that.
We should have it all dated out so we know whoever you're.
Get your schedule together.
Get, schedule them out.
Yeah, sure. I have it actually. I have on my dry erase board in my office. I have. Each year the tire is being replaced. I have the dates and years when they have to.
Let's get it on your dry erase board and into a capital plan so, so we know.
Well, we'll put it on paper.
Okay.
It can still stay on his board, but we'll put it on paper.
You know what I meant.
So could you reduce this twelve thousand a little bit? A little, little.
Go to ten if you'd like me to. And if something bad happens, I'll just come to you.
What, you know, things happen.
Of course, if things happen, but I'm just asking you.
It's fine.
That's fine, okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, the next question I got, this one really irritates me, but. Uh, annual soft and service contract. I asked you about this a couple of months ago. You got two thousand dollars in there. And to the best of my knowledge, this has not been done since two thousand and eighteen.
The truck is serviced to G K with licensed technicians that can service.
Yeah, I'm not talking about.
The money is left.
Not talking about your, your vehicle.
The money is left in there because if it does have to go to something, if they find something that they say it needs to go to something, then it won't go to something. It hasn't happened yet. They're the ones that found the original problem with the truck before I became chief and fixed the problem. So I have complete faith in that and working on that truck and all the other apparatus that we have on four down here on South Street. Complete faith. Stony Hill uses the same firm. That was one thing that we were told right away was. The original, when the original commission was formed, we want you using light vendors as much as you can. That's what we're doing. Right. It's also, it's also only forty minutes away, which is closer.
I don't think anyone's fighting about gallons a night.
You're not, you're not understanding.
It's in the two thousand dollars. I understand that, but every line item you build is an absolute worst case. Like if we run over ten rocks and blow out ten tires this year. And the subfin has to go out this year, like it's, it's every line item is built as an absolute worst case. You don't necessarily know that's the prudent way to do it because then it all looks padded. And and not that I'm saying you're padding, you're saying this is the worst case in this line item, but the town wants to budget at, you know, we want the budget at a reasonable thing. And then if something's out of that, you you get a contingency for that. You deal with that as a, as the one offs in a separate action. That's my thought on.
The annual soft and service contract is factory recommended service that be performed by the factory every year on that truck. Always was, always has been. It used to be twelve hundred dollars. It's, I'm sure it's up to two thousand. To my knowledge, it has not been done since the fire apparatus commission had it done. When, when you had the problem with the truck, I believe it was two thousand and eighteen. It's the last time it was done. It's supposed to be done every year by the factory. They used to come to the firehouse and they would do it. At the firehouse.
You can do it. You wanna do it.
You have a line item for it. You should be doing it. It should be done.
To me, as I told you, I hold that in reserve for that truck specifically, if there's a problem with it. G K, let's not forget, G K solved the problem with it.
No, they did not.
Yes, they did.
No, they did not, Chris.
They drain the fluid.
Chris, that truck went to shipments, which is Soffin's Authorized Service Center, and that's where the truck was repaired.
It went to G K first.
And they were unable to fix it. Read the minutes. It it's all in there. It's very detailed on what happened with that vehicle. And that, and that is the basis for this commission, uh, why this commission was formed in the long run, was because of everything that went on with that truck.
Listen, if you wanted to go there, it can go there.
I wanted to go there in addition to G K. That would, that would, the annual service on all the apparatus that you have done at G K. Is above and beyond the special service that is done by Soffis on that, Soffin on that truck. That Soffin service contract is a factory recommended service that happens on all their aerial apparatus that goes out the door. That they ever sell. They have factory recommended service that they perform on every piece of aerial apparatus they sell. Except ours. So that should be done every year, and it should also go to G K for its annual vehicle inspection pump service and, and what you, what you're already doing.
Which absolutely we're doing it.
You're right, absolutely. I'm just saying that this is a separate service for that specialized piece of equipment. And you know, aerial tower is the most expensive piece of equipment that a town can buy. And that, that's, that's factory recommended service and and it should be done.
Okay, well, I can do it. I mean.
I I I would like to see it done like immediately because as far as I know, it hasn't been done since two thousand and eighteen.
The, the truck has been serviced and the aerial has been tested.
I I understand all that.
I want, I want to make that clear to this commission. The aerial has been tested every year by an individual that's certified to do that. Through the testing company we use for events.
That ones at night does not have Soffin certified.
I didn't say, I didn't say G K, did I? I did not say G K. The company that comes in and does all our ladders.
That's the ladder testing, yes. I I I I understand, Chris. You're not, you're not hearing what I'm saying.
I'm hearing what you're saying. You're not letting me talk to tell you that they also test aerials. And they, and they're certified to do that.
I understand.
I made sure they were certified to do it.
That, that, that is a separate service that's.
And there was an agreement with Soffin when the truck was bought or the ladder was replaced on it. To do the annual service on the truck, is correct?
Factory recommended service on every aerial tower that Soffin sells, that they come out and they perform an annual service on the truck. You also have to do your annual ladder testing, which includes the aerial testing and all your ground ladder testing. That, that's in addition through your independent ground ladder testing company. And then you also have to do your annual vehicle inspection, which you do to G K. And such. These, all three of those are items that need to be completed on that piece of apparatus.
Well, we'll contact Soffin tomorrow soon if it comes.
Okay, perfect.
Right, I believe that services, when they go on, they grease the ladder and they check everything, make sure all the bolts are tight, check support.
Basically, they do everything that the ladder testing company does on it.
I was there when they did it before, when the fire commission was formed and.
When shipments came out.
I was, no, it wasn't shipment. It was a guy right out of Pennsylvania from Southern. I brought the truck out live for him.
You're right.
And stayed there with him when dinner.
Oh, right. And then when we when we repaired it, it went to shipment.
I actually have in my notes in my truck when they came out and did that at the firehouse.
Yeah, it was two thousand eighteen nineteen. It was like the first year to Chief Murphy.
Yeah, yep.
I just wanna make sure that 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 truck is getting all three things it's supposed to be having. It's supposed to be having an annual ladder test by a third party independent testing company. It's supposed to be getting its, you know, annual vehicle inspection, which is being done by currently you're using gallons tonight to do it and then doing your pump service, your vehicle inspection, all that, you know. And it's supposed to have his factory uh service performed. Which like Dave said, is, you know, they come out and basically do everything that the ladder testing company does and then anything that's specialized on it. I mean, they grease the ladder, they the uh they grease the water, they lubricate the waterway, they they check all the slide blocks for proper torque and they check them. It's it's an extensive list. I mean, you should have all the previous reports on file. Usually what we used to do is we would have the ladder test, the independent ladder testing company come in first. And they would know any, uh you know, things that needed attention. And then we would have the soften service contract performed, knowing that the ladder testing company already found these defects or items that needed attention. Now you have the factory authorized service.
Right, that's what I explained earlier was that was what we've been doing, but they haven't found anything that needed went to that level for something, but if you want something, and we'll get something after them.
Okay.
Because that was our plan. That's the way we've we've operated for three years. If they come in in like May, April, May.
So if we can move move on, Chairman. Chief, so let's make it clear that your truck one will be inspected by Soffin ASAP. And it's documented and the fire commission gets that information.
Okay. Chairman just said he wants it done after the normal tests. So what do you wanna do?
Let's get it done as soon as possible because to my recollection, it has not been done several years. But going forward in in the next fiscal year, let's have your your independent ladder testing first.
They're out of New Jersey, come in and they do everything. With all all that stuff I mentioned, NAS is the whole.
All right, so all of that being said, we have, looks like you got about an eight thousand dollar increase in this account from last year. From being all recommended that we take two out of that that twelve thousand dollar line item. Where where exactly does that eight thousand dollar increase fall? I mean.
I put it in the in the inspection and testing, all that because like I said, we don't know where the costs are going. They're going up every six months. They're going up. I know like from triple A today, talking to him, there's gonna be five percent of stuff from them July one.
Is there any any more room in this account other than two thousand dollars? I mean, that eight thousand dollar increase seems pretty stiff to me. I know costs are going up everywhere. I mean, you can't.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's the problem. I mean, you know. I mean.
I mean, can we get another three out of that th- that thirty forty eight forty four?
I mean, we can't really do anything with the brake check.
Oh, that was the other question. You have engine six in uh for a brake check.
Yeah.
I saw engine six was in for a brake check in last year's budget.
Uh then I wrote the wrong thing in there. There's three rigs that are due. There's three that are due. We checked that.
You know what, there. The line item is also the least spent of the year. This line item, the their fifty two oh eight now is the least uh least spent of the year over the course of the year.
Last year you had rescue one, engine six, and engine five for a brake check.
Yeah, then the wrong ones got put in there. So I would say that you could probably do, let's see, because yeah, engine six definitely shouldn't be in it because it's five years old. Engine six is going on five years old. I'd say there's gotta be the tanker. It might be a truck. Yeah. I thought so, but it's by the stickers on the doors.
In the previous year, I had I had truck one and tanker one had a brake check.
And then these three were last year.
This one. This is the twenty three twenty four I got, which would be this year. This this current budget that you're working on.
Right, right.
The only, you had engine six for a three year brake check.
Okay.
And then the previous year, you had truck one and tanker one for a brake check.
Okay. So that's. It'll be next year. It'll be next year.
Twenty twenty. Twenty four twenty five.
Right? So it should be one, should be one truck, not three. But of course, it'll be more with the ladder truck and the tanker because they have an extra ax. So one truck is a thousand dollars when it's got just the single ax. So that should be zip, yeah, so you should be able to take two thousand.
Two or three.
No, 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 we still gotta do one.
So we can reduce.
I would reduce that by by two because we still gotta do the other one. That's my mistake.
Okay.
And I would have realized it eventually. The rest, what's the rest?
Need to.
They were, right? Okay, so Dave's saying that the rescue and the squad were done three years ago. If that's true, then I'm right, but I had it.
There'll only be two, there'll only be two trucks, I'm sure. I thought of it, it's like, engine six will be next year.
Right, six would be next year. It would be.
Two trucks.
Rescue one and squad five should be this year. Six should be next year. Because it's it's on its fifth year now. It'll be six years next year. So that'll be its second time it gets checked. Yeah, because squad five is in its ninth year now. So that's right. Three, six, nine. So it's two, not one. And then six will be next year.
All right, so I'm confused now.
I'm confused. Should be rescue one. We believe it should be rescue one and squad five. Squad five is one, nine years old, which means that three, six, nine, so that's gotta be done. That should be being done.
I have. I have engine six being done twenty three in the twenty three twenty four.
A big part of the problem too is that this wasn't being done before I had to vote. So then we scream, let's do it. So they're kinda like out of sync with when they should, you know what I mean? They weren't being done in three years.
So and then this year you were, you were request, this year you were requesting rescue one, engine six and squad.
Squad five, right. But six is five years old, so six should be next year. That'll be six years old next year.
So we're saying that you have to do rescue one.
And squad five.
So we can reduce that by five thousand.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So we're able to reduce this budget by a total of three thousand so far. Seventy. Closer.
Closer. Would you reduce Chief Baker's budget fund?
I think Chief Baker's fire uh vehicle maintenance was pretty flat.
Well, he's also got less vehicles to maintain. Engine eleven is gone.
Anybody else have any more recommendations or uh motion?
Make a motion, we approve vehicle maintenance account five two zero eight in the amount of seventy three thousand zero seventy six.
All right, motion to fund the vehicle maintenance account in the amount of seventy three thousand zero seventy six. Seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Firehouse maintenance.
It's, I love that flat.
How much cooking do you do in that kitchen? Do you have those, puts clean twice a year?
Actually, no, a lot because they got the wash sink in there, so.
There's a what?
It's gonna start to be rented out again also. It's already, they've already started renting, you know. Yeah, they have a separate wash sink that we didn't have in there. So we worked hand in hand with the health department to find out exactly what we needed to give and that's been done. And they cook in there for every drill. Basically every drill. We we very rarely, we used to Chairman could tell you, we used to, we're a lot, right? Pizza and other things. We don't do that anymore. There there's a, there's a kitchen committee that goes in there on roll lines and cooks for us, which is nice, you know. But, so you're using it quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, but I, we're using it once a week, I mean.
You gotta clean it.
Twice a year though?
Right, fire.
Uh it's, I I think it's uh mandated by.
It is.
I I I don't know.
Which I didn't realize that. Yeah.
I know you would ask me about it, but I I don't recall, so.
Because the other issue there is is uh that's gonna have to be upgraded to at some point. The fire suppression system for the hood. So I I would assume that if I had a building maintenance, you know, not my, you know, building maintenance overall, that they would have to handle that. I don't know. I'm not really sure, but you know.
I answered the question, when you rent out the building, that go to the fire department, does that go to the general fund?
I'm sorry?
When they rent out the the hall.
With agreement with the town, it's always going to the department. Any cost for it obviously would be reimbursed to the town. I let them know, we, if something happens, you know, like something gets broken or something, that's gotta take. Yes. That was like an in kind thing, Rich, that people was done, both fire departments.
So a thousand dollars in office supplies. What does that encompass?
What does that encompass? It's paper. I'm gonna get some letterhead. I need letterhead. I'm gonna get some letterhead printed up again. We're getting uh business cards. It's basic stuff.
I only ask because Chief Baker asked for three hundred dollars in office supplies and stationery.
Okay. Maybe it means different things than we do.
You create dimes the amount that he needs?
That's not what I'm saying.
That's what I'm asking.
Would you like to cut it? Make a recommended cut and I'll tell you what I think.
I recommend we cut that line to three hundred dollars.
I would say that you should leave me at least five hundred in there. Good with that?
I'm good with that.
So we're dropping office supply to five hundred dollars?
Yes. Well, just a piece of information for your benefit, I used to always be able to come here and get all the paper I wanted. When when Franklin Dollar was upstairs, I'd say, Frank, I need paper.
I can't get paper here for something even printed. Can't do that.
I'm I'm saying, I'm saying.
I do that. I do that for the copier.
Right, and I never had to pay for it.
I understand that. It's an in kind service.
Right.
But letterhead, I can't get.
No, I know, I understand, letterhead. It's your reams of paper. I used to go to Frank and say, yeah, go down, you over here, go down the basement, there's boxes.
Yeah, it's over here.
Wherever, wherever it is, yeah.
It's over here now.
Used to be at the bottom of the elevator. It used to be in the clerk's office, yeah. All right, so we'll reduce that to five hundred.
Pest control, pest control, we had mice already once.
Yeah, no, I know it needs to be done. I'm only asking because Stony, Stony Hills Pest Control cost was six fifty.
Yeah, I think, I think we're okay.
And I I didn't see, I didn't see an expense in your year to date for it anywhere. Unless I didn't know.
It was a bill that I paid.
Unless I didn't know what the vendor's name was.
Yeah, I and you know what? I couldn't tell you what. I'd have to research it for you. There was a bill that I paid. He uh they came and they did it. They're the ones that work for the town of Alamo. Um and so far, fingers crossed, we've been good. But uh they came in and they were like everywhere in that kitchen, not good. So we took care of it right away.
So that that's an ac- accurate cost?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know.
They come once a month.
Well, he comes whenever he says he needs to come and and there's a charge for it.
I think it used to be once a month.
Like he comes, he comes, he comes once, he comes once when we get him.
Or or toe exterminator or some something like that.
He came and took care of it and the thing was, he said, if you see him again, then I'll need to come frequently to do it. But we haven't seen him again, so so far, like I said, and I found we're good. But if they come in again, you know, we'll have to go more frequently. So he just made the one visit.
Chris, what's uh in your building repair and cleaning uh account? What does that cover?
It's basically anything there that breaks in the building, you know, you know.
Building maintenance, some cover those things?
They cover some, Rich. It's, listen, you guys talked about this before, remember? About what building maintenance should cover and what we should cover? Both myself and Chief Baker should cover out of our accounts. You know, I'd love to see building maintenance cover just about everything. But, you know, it is what it is. So it makes sure.
Does a cleaning company that does the municipal center do all the other cleaning in the firehouse?
The tour, Kathy set up the tour for all the companies to do bids. I don't know where that's at. I have no idea.
No, I'm just curious if they're the same vendor.
I think it's the same.
I think it's the same. I'm not sure. I'm pretty sure it's the same. And they come in and they'll do um the floors, like they'll strip them X amount of times a year. And then we, you know, clean them and wax them and then other times throughout the year, they come in and they burnish the floors where they're polishing. It's like a, just a basic clean and polish.
I see you have a separate line for floor cleaning and waxing. That's not included in your in your building.
That's the, that's the extra because what happens is, and this is kinda another thing, is upstairs Kathy takes care of X amount. And then if there's more to be needed, there's a little bit in this account that can be used for that. That's why it's there. That's exactly why it's there because she's got an account that's covering multiple buildings. So if it gets down, she lets me know and I might just take it out of this. Fine, that's terrible. I'm kinda surprised that that's not all in building maintenance to begin with.
Oh, yeah, no, I tend to agree with you there.
I mean, I, I just, you know, there's one that they have to manage.
Seems, yeah, we had, we had a lot of cleaning lines in here, wood cleaning.
Well, this is what we've been in there. So, you know, I'm just kinda maintaining it.
In kitchen cleaning, do they clean the hoods? Do they clean the filter?
Kitchen, kitchen cleaning is not the hood. The wood cleaning is right there. It's a thousand dollars. That's every six months.
I'm talking about filters.
The filters, he re, he takes those filters out and they they wash them. I guess they're mesh wire enough. They get washed, so then they get put back in.
So what is the kitchen cleaning then?
The kitchen cleaning line is there for anything to do with the tile floor, the countertops.
Did you just have a member do the tile floor and guide?
Kitchen? Well, I don't think that members have been alive anymore, to be honest with you.
No, it was just on like last month.
Well, I don't know. I, all I'm telling you is that's what's there. Well, I don't know, I also am telling you is that's what's there, it needs to be done. So every once in a while, I believe they like to bring somebody in. When they bring somebody in, I'm gonna be paying for it out of this budget. You know, like a deep clean type of deal. Like they did it where they moved everything out and they deep cleaned the whole floor.
Yeah, I thought Chief Pete and Joe Shaw just did.
Our members deep clean the whole floor, but.
I don't think they charged us.
Come in too and do that. The company that does the floors will do that, that's all they're gonna do then.
So we already have a line for four thousand dollars for floor cleaning and waxing. But we have to have another line for cleaning the floors for fifteen hundred for just the kitchen?
It's up to you, I'm just telling you, that's what was always there, I just maintained it when I took over. I haven't raised it, it's just been maintained.
Well, I I'll recommend that we remove the kitchen kitchen cleaning line for fifteen hundred dollars. And and we get the kitchen cleaned and the floors cleaned in the in the. And the other lines of building repair and cleaning and clean floor cleaning and waxing. We should be able to encompass the kitchen clean within those two ways.
So you want to delete kitchen clean?
I I'll I'll recommend that we delete fifteen hundred dollars, the line in kitchen clean. Anybody else have any other questions on firehouse maintenance? So I'll make a motion that we reduce the firehouse maintenance account by two thousand dollars and fund it in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred dollars. Second by Tony. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries.
You want to?
You want to? Twenty thousand dollar increase, twenty one thousand dollar increase.
Kristi, you started talking earlier, you were talking about the masks, you were saying, oh, we got like two left to go.
Two left are the ones we bought.
We bought twenty, okay, so you have two left, you used eighteen.
We issued eighteen, we're gonna issue the last two, I'd like to get some more. And as I explained to the chairman the other day about, if those twelve air packs come in, when there's outs still. I'll have twelve there. If the twelve air packs come complete, Rich, I would, you can order a different. When I got them priced out, I got them priced out complete, that's with the air bottle, that's with the mask. You can order them with just the frame with no bottle and no mats. Makes no sense to me. I ordered them complete. We're two years back now, supposedly, they're supposed to come in July. That'll be that'll be twelve A V three thousand masks just like this.
How many interiors certified firefighters you have right now?
Forty plus.
You seem to have indicated to me the other day that with the packs coming in that we, you could cut this number in half from twenty to ten.
That's what I told you.
And said you still have two left.
Two left, we're gonna issue out, yeah.
And I think this is a face that it should not be wearing an S C B A mask, although you did issue me one. So I will return mine, that leaves you with three, ten more, and it makes thirteen, so I would say. You could actually reduce it to seven, but I'll I'll give you eight, I would go with eight for this year.
Up to you, gentlemen. I'm just telling you what I've got and what I'm looking at, I would say.
Well, if I give you mine back, you got three.
You know, the ultimate goal is that every certified firefighter has their own mask. Especially with what we've got going on in the last couple of years with COVID, you know, there's other things out there. I would rather they all have their own mask that they have to take care of, they have to maintain, it's in their own bag. Nobody's using it, it's theirs.
Yeah, well, I mean, I gotta be perfectly honest with you, you gave me one and it's sitting in the bottom of my locker, it hasn't been worn, it hasn't been used, it hasn't been.
Well, that's a shame. Well.
So like my question is, besides the the personal mask for everybody? On all the engines, in the truck, in the rescue?
You have it.
So those are those air packs? The the uh, yeah, the high temp mask? No, they were just a standard, your standard mask that comes with.
Right, because typically those masks are mostly medium masks, because that's what most people wear. I wear a large and I also wear glasses, so.
I'm just talking about what's on the the trucks.
I also have five broken masks next to my desk right now that if they go out and get fixed, they're gonna fix them because the lenses are all cracked. So they're gonna have to be replaced.
You should take his two. No, Chris, Chris saying he has two in stock and you're saying you have five broken ones.
Two brand new in stock, that's correct. But the problem is when it when they blow out like that, they they don't, they don't even come back to us.
Alright, well, anyway, my point, my point was, you said you you indicated to me the other day, you were comfortable with reducing it by half, bringing it down from twenty to ten. I'm saying you still have two in stock, plus mine makes three, that would bring it down to actually seven. I would would you be comfortable with eight?
If that's what you gentlemen wanna do, I mean, I I got twelve coming at some point. We don't know when, I'm hoping July.
You had something?
I I just say ten, make it ten.
Ten?
I can zoom with the few.
My ultimate goal is that everybody that's certified, it's a firefighter, have their own.
But eventually, are you gonna change the packs on the on the engines and the truck and the rescue to the high temp mask? That's what I'm trying to get across.
That's what we're trying to do now.
Right, if you're issuing high temp mask to all tiered firefighters. Well, the the masks on on the equipment should have the high temp mask too, not.
But we can face those. Because everybody will have their own.
I'm just thinking about what, you know, you might get somebody from another department, you might get us from Stony Hill, a lot of us don't have our own masks. I gotta put that back on. I should have the same mask as everybody else has a high temp mask.
The other thing we've run into is um. As people get tested, we found that with that, like five or six that wear small. There's five or six of us, including myself, that wear a large. Like I said, the majority of people were mediums. But you still have, right, everybody, some in small, some in medium, some in large. And like I said, anyone with glasses, I I'm getting masks out to them, so that you put the the glasses in there. Which we have to supply, by the way, that's cut and stone. If you wear glasses. We have to supply that kit for that mask, and then they go and get what I tell them. We will allow, which is a polycarbonate lens with anti glare on it, and their prescription. And we we pay for that through the town, but through this project, we pay for that. So there's a record that we we got it and they have it, and there's no P S after that, they have it, because they should be using it.
So so is everybody comfortable with with funding that line at at forty four ninety, ten masks? Alright, I had a question on the firefighting gear. And I know there's a huge increase, I actually had to, I was astounded by the increase, so I actually went and looked it up myself and.
Brutal.
And and it's just, it's crazy.
It is, it's brutal.
Oh, see, you and Chief Baker do it a little differently, you you uncover all the gear, the pants, the coat, helmet, gloves. Everything all together. He separates it out, he does coats and pants, and then he has a separate line for his boots and helmets and gloves and all that. Well, when you add his two lines together. There's for eight sets of gear and eight sets of gear that you asked for, there's a fifteen hundred dollar difference, he's getting his. Eight sets for fifteen hundred dollars less.
Okay, he's also getting different gear than us.
Well, that's my point, the town of Buffalo should be buying the same gear for everybody.
We're morning pride. Um, quite frankly, I feel it's the best gear on the market. Um, our people are comfortable in it, they like it, um, they the women get a great fit. In the morning pride, and that's what we went with, and it's from New York State, we actually switched from Massachusetts. To New York State because again, the mask bid was higher than the New York State bid. So we're dealing with a firm high tech that's out of Long Island. Um, our rep is um, a assistant chief of chief of Northern Fire. And like I said, we get a good price for it. Because it's New York State bid, which is amazing, you know, it's like a couple thousand dollars less. It's like the same thing with the airbox, you know, it's a couple thousand less, it's amazing. That's why I was saying before, I wish Connecticut did something with the state bid, because it's probably stay right here in Connecticut.
Yeah, I mean, I don't I don't think Chief Baker is getting inferior turnout here.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that at all.
I just, I I think I think as a town, we should be purchasing the same gear for everybody. You're saying purchase different gear, one department versus the other.
Well, I, you know, we got a lot of, we got a lot of morning pride gear, I can tell you that much.
What do what what are they buying out of Stony Hills here?
I don't remember what we buy. But we just got fitted, the guy, the gentleman was there.
Oh, that was the only point I wanted to make, it was just, when when I added the the two lines in Chief Baker's account for eight gears, it was fifteen hundred dollars different than the. Total line that you had for eight sets. And I just, I know we're working on a twenty one thousand dollar increase in this account.
Chris, does he have harnesses in there and stuff like that?
He is, yes, yes, he has harness, he has coats, pants and harnesses in one line and then helmets, gloves and boots. And hoods in a in another line.
The barrier hood.
Are all the um cancer preventative stuffs? So that could be part of the reason why.
Well, I asked that question the other, the other day, and they said that they haven't really taken out all the the gear yet. Have they taken out the P F O S stuff out of the?
There there's stuff they're putting in the gear now that 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 does that, that prevents. It's for the cancers, for the cancer prevention.
It's like skirts sometimes, yeah.
Special skirts that they put it, that they sew in.
So that your your equipment has that feature in it?
Yeah, it's included as a gear we're gonna be buying. So it's it's a step up, we're just gonna keep going with what we need to go with, you know, it's, and that's gonna be mandated, that that stuff's done now. It's come.
This will actually be the first set that we get that has the cancer preventative stuff to be good. And you haven't had it before.
The the other thing is, and it's something for you gentlemen to be aware of, I don't know if you are, I was just being aware of it yesterday. Is that now what they're doing is the powers that be, none of us get to sit on those boards to make all these monumental decisions. They're so concerned about the P F O S, that we're gonna have our two sets of gear that's for interior firefighting. And then they're gonna make you get a third set of gear, that's like wildland gear, to wear on certain calls. So like if you go to a motor vehicle accident, and you're not gonna be like the hose man on the engine. You're supposed to be wearing the wildland stuff. Okay, it depends on the call you go to, brush fires, you don't wear your your fire gear at all, you're gonna wear the wildland stuff. Which is a step down, it's still protecting you for the flash for flash of fire, but it's a step down. But they're gonna make us purchase all that too, everybody.
Alright, so let me just ask you, you're a hundred percent sure that it's new gear?
It is, because we got one set that I based the pricing on, with it in it, so you could try it. To tell us how the how the feel is, how the fit is, yes. I got one set that way, with Arbolton, is how I got it.
Four thousand dollars in fire replacement firing, we bought a lot of firearms last year.
Yep, we're almost done, we're not there yet. We got some 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 five inch fabric, we lost two legs at Greenwood Avenue. We got some older fires fabric, it's gonna have to be replaced. Um, we have basically none on the rack. We should have at least enough on the rack to cover what gets dumped off of one rig of fire. And then there's a little bit of inch and three quarter, other than that, we're gonna be good. And the way we bought it is gonna be a good way to have a hose replacement program that really was kinda like, you know. Hit or miss with what was there, some of the stuff I got rid of, uh, was over thirty years old, um, in the last couple of years, you know. And they were testing it and they were, but they were testing it and then they were saying to me, you know, you know. Next year, this shit's done, you know, okay. You know, so that's how we worked it.
I didn't, I didn't actually inventory your hose, I I looked at your hose rack the other day, and it's it's full.
Not with five inches, no.
No, it's not full with five inch. I showed you, we cut your two lengths that were damaged, you got, you claimed those on your insurance, replace those on.
We're claiming those on insurance, we don't know what's gonna happen, Phil's does not know what's gonna happen. The research was done with the company that was then sold to another company, that was then sold to another company. And we're Sue Gotts there, they're 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 not gonna guarantee it, even though it's only nine years old, and the guarantee was, you actually bought the hose. Till ten years. Well, I'm bringing it out so the other gentleman knows what's going on. So we did.
But you filed an insurance claim, right?
Yes, we did do our research, I did speak with Phil's about it, I did get the price, it's over two thousand dollars for two looks on us.
So how much more five inches do you have to purchase? Right now, for this coming bunch of year?
Well, I'd like to, we'd like to purchase at least eight hundred feet, eight thousand, two thousand. But if we get these two legs on insurance, then we gotta purchase eight.
So you're looking to keep a thousand feet of five inch hose on the rack?
We've had before.
Not when I was chief, I never had any.
I'd have quite a bit of five inch right now, if the ladder truck had been replaced three years ago, but, you know, we gotta wait for that to happen.
We had three hoses go bad the last couple times we tested those, and we just threw it away and now we're advised.
Because it's extremely expensive, so I said, you know what, we still got enough here, let's wait and do this other stuff. It's the interiors stuff, and then we'll replace the five inch flats. That's what we're doing.
Do you have money right now in your account to buy some hose now? This budget, your working budget right now until July? You buy some hose?
Bought a lot of hoses already.
I'm talking five inch.
I did. No, not for the, no, no, not for the five.
Bought a, he bought a lot of uh. Two inch, two and a half, an inch and three quarter.
We replaced a lot of the old three inch and the two and a half. And then we bought some two inch, replaced, we had a. Absorbing an amount of inch and three quarter. So we replaced a bunch of inch and three quarter with two inch. Got the right nozzles for it and uh, the firefighters love it. Gives them more water and a better flow rate, and uh, those are a hundred foot lengths instead of fifty foot lengths. So you have less drag. So like off the the back end of both engines, we have one three hundred foot reconnected to each line, off each one. That's what was used initially on Greenwood Avenue, that was the first line off the truck, because they pulled it and took it right around back. Because it was three hundred feet.
So how much, how much five inch do you have on on engine five, engine six on the truck right now?
There's a thousand feet on spot five, there's fifteen hundred feet on engine six, and there's a thousand feet on the ladder front.
And you have, you have, there's no spare right now.
There's no spare right now. No, the stuff on the rack uh, is the smaller lengths.
I recall when I was chief, we used to keep us a couple of, you know, short pony legs.
That's what we have.
Never had any, I I never had any spare five inch.
I think we have like four or five mines to go bad in the past couple.
We did, we had spare five inch on.
Well, yeah, because there used to be two thousand feet on six, the old six. I don't know, I don't know what the big six ever has.
What's the length of five inch hose? A length of five inch hose, hundred feet. How much is it now?
It's a little over a thousand dollars. That's what I said, it's it's uh, the insurance claim is for a little over two thousand dollars for two lengths.
That that's a hundred feet, you said?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yep. Everything we're getting now, it, well, five inches has always been a hundred. The two inches a hundred. The, the uh, inch and three quarter will be a hundred foot lengths. The two and a half and the three inch is fifty foot lengths because that gets pretty heavy to drag around if you got a hundred foot line. So we kept those at fifty.
But year to date, year to date, you still have money in equipment and supplies. Maybe can you buy a couple lengths now?
We're, we're replacing some right now. Some, some.
Types of tool that you love at the structure.
Some inch and three quarter.
So I'm talking about five inch hose.
But I still gotta pay for gear that I just got built for fire here. Gotta pay for that first.
Okay.
Because as I said before, you, we're, we're kinda locked in there. If you gotta supply two sets for everybody. It's a certified fire. It's the standard now.
I don't know, it's, to me, it seems like thirty five hundred feet of five inch hose on, on those three trucks is more than adequate. I mean. I, you, when I was chief, the only reason I kept a thousand feet of five inch on the, on the tower was because it fit. We used to have five hundred on there. And then we bought, we bought a whole bunch of the new hose. So we had extra hose and so we'll throw the other five hundred on the tower just cause it fit and we didn't have room on the hose rack.
You know, my other fear is that. And it's not your fault, the hose you bought, it's two lengths failed with that fire. How much did you buy that? You know, do you remember?
What color is it?
That's the orange.
Orange, that's two, that was two thousand feet.
My fear is we're gonna have more of that fail as we move forward. So at least if I have some on the rack. We can replace it right away.
Can I add one thing? I would like to have the extra hose on rack. If we get a negative temperature storm where it's like freezing and the hose is frozen, it's not gonna go back in service that much.
I understand the theory of keeping it on the rack. My point is, I don't think we need to keep a thousand feet of five inch hose on the rack. You have to buy another rack.
You know, I didn't bring that.
Your rack is.
Chris has a team rack.
Rack is full. There's no room. There's room for two lengths. When you throw out the two lengths that went bad.
Okay.
The Freddy suggesting a, a reduction in that line item of twelve thousand dollars?
I'll hear, I'll hear, I'll entertain something. You said you're buying inch and three quarter now out of, out of this budget. So you're saying this twelve.
Small, a small amount, yes.
So this, this twelve thousand, you're pretty much gearing towards five inch for next year. At, at eleven hundred dollars a length.
It's a little over, it's a little over a thousand a length. It, it jumps between like nine something and a thousand something. It's been jumping back and forth. If I catch him right, it'll be a little bit.
Well, I'll, I'll make a recommendation that we, we recommend five lengths at what's called eleven hundred dollars a length. So that would be fifty five hundred dollars. Twelve thousand.
I'd support you on that.
Anybody opposed that? Look at that?
Yeah, you know, I just make a comment. I mean, if he has hose failure, then he has to come back to us and tell, if he has hose, hose failure, we need to do more.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, I.
But I agree with you. You got thirty five hundred feet on the truck stop.
Right, I mean, I, I.
And I, I understand, you know, if it's frozen, it's, you got a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I threw it out there before. Like I said, there's a thousand feet on, on the ladder. We, we used to only have five hundred feet on the ladder truck. The only reason it got up to a thousand was because we had the extra hose. And we needed a place to put it and it fit. So I mean, you know. You could steal five hundred feet off the ladder truck and put it on an engine if you had to.
Well, two thousand feet of the orange stuff, we may not, and we'll see how, how that works out, cause that's separated. That's what happened to that hose. The inner jacket separated from the outer jacket. So that's a bad thing. We were lucky it didn't fail completely at the fire.
Also, I mean.
Found it when we broke it down after.
We're, we're recommending that, you know, five lengths for fifty five hundred dollars plus you're gonna get two hundred in insurance claim. That, that's.
We're hoping we're gonna get.
You know.
Phil's doesn't know what's gonna happen. She's gonna claim it. It's just like when we used the foam down at the industrial park and we claimed it and nothing ever came of it. We didn't get any reimbursement for it. The patent and everything else, we worked through deep. We were able to get that, but deep doesn't make them replace the foam, which I think is. You know, kinda ridiculous, but it is what it is. We used uh, quite a bit of foam down there that day for that truck park.
But in the meantime, I know you have to pay for your, your gear now out of equipment, but if you had some money. This year, can you buy some five inch hose?
I could try if I have money.
If you have the money, can you buy the five inch hose?
I could try.
You try.
I mean, once you get to the end of April, you, you kinda know where you're going with your budget and what you're gonna have left for the remainder of the year.
Buy some five inch hose.
All right, let's, what else? I had a couple of.
So what are you doing on the hose?
Well, it was my recommendation to, to, to reduce the five, five lengths of five inch hose to fifty five hundred dollars. Reduce, reduce that line to fifty five hundred dollars. You, do you do a lot more uh ventilation, roof ventilation, cutting with uh, than Stony Hill does?
Why?
Well, I, I'm asking because, cause you're asking for twice as much in saw blades and chains as Stony Hill does.
What's the number of saws and chains those gave? Eight sauce. Yeah. Plus two spares, right? Yeah, two, those two spares. It's ten. That's what we got that we're maintaining.
Well, that's how many saws you got, right? So you, so you have to replace all the blades and all the chains on all those saws?
Listen, every time you're running a, a, a course. And you're teaching ventilation, you're using saws. Blades wear out. Yeah, those blades for four and five hundred dollars a day. They cheap. But you gotta give them the live training.
Asking a question because of the Chief Baker's account, he asked for seven hundred and fifty dollars for blades and chains and you asked for.
How many saws does he have? Cause I think it's an alien fear to compare that without knowing how many saws. Cause we have ten. We have ten that we're maintaining.
I'm asking the question.
So I, I know, I'm giving you the answer. We have ten.
Not a matter of how many saws. It is a matter of how many, how many, how many.
Yeah, it is.
I asked you a question. Are you doing more cutting than they are?
Because you're allowing for how many, how many blades and chains you're gonna have, so you can replace them right away instead of having to send them to somewhere to get it done. We do it in-house unless we have to send it out. And all the, and all the. True Dave, who's done a great job, all the blades now are the same size on all the saws. Because we had a mixed match before when I took over. David's made sure that we all have the same and those match Stony Hills. The blade size is the same. And all those circular saws, it's the same size. So there's no more difference.
That argument kinda supports less blades. Over time.
Maybe over time.
If it's all the same blade and you're all, you had ten of them. You're not gonna replace ten, right? And you don't need to stock ten different ones. You need to stock.
If you wanna cut it, cut it. I'm not gonna sit here and argue with you over. This, this little bit, that little bit. If you wanna cut it, cut it. And if I come up short, I'll just come back to you gentlemen. It's fine. It's up to you guys. I just hope that once we're done here tonight, you fully support whatever the budget is that you gentlemen, okay, because. There's two more boards we gotta go talk to. Right?
That's the idea.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Recommendation, I cut it, leave it. Are you satisfied with it?
Let's pull five hundred out of that. I would suggest taking that.
Alright, so we're gonna recommend that we reduce the, the saw blade and chains to a thousand dollars.
Fred, I think you need to take motion on each.
I think.
Each thing because.
Okay.
Cause you're gonna do a bottom line and I, I can't support something, so. I think if you did it line by line.
Okay, alright, alright. Well, let, let, let's go back and we'll start where we are. So um. We'll entertain a motion to reduce the line of uh, replacement of fire hose, reduce, reduce it from twelve thousand fifty five hundred. To a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so. Motion carries to reduce the line of replacing fire hose from twelve thousand to fifty five hundred.
Sixty, sixty five hundred, you take fifty five out.
No.
No, reducing it to fifty five.
Or five length.
Five at eleven hundred.
Five, it's five lengths of five inch hose, it'll be a hundred dollars.
Right, so you're, you're subtracting. Are you subtracting a five fifty off the twelve or you just?
No, we're, we're funding, we're funding, we're funding the line at fifty five hundred.
Alright, may I ask the chief of, were you buying any other hose or that was all the five inch in that line or the twelve thou?
We would see if we had money to also buy a little bit of inch and three quarter, but I'll have to wait.
Okay, alright.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to fund the line of replacement of blades and chains for saws. Fund that line at a thousand dollars, reducing it by five hundred.
Second.
All those in favor to fund the line, replacement of blades and chains for saws at a thousand dollars?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Three, you have one. Alright.
The other reduction was the masks.
Yeah, a, a motion to. Reduce the line of the Scott AB that, three thousand high temp mask. Will reduce it from eighty nine eighty to forty four ninety.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Office of Works.
You reduce that.
Yes.
Two oh two.
I'm looking for it.
Last line, two oh two.
Yeah, we already did have a five hundred dollar.
You voted on that one?
Well, we, we voted on the entire account.
Yeah.
Alright, so. Sticking with the two oh two, I had a couple more questions, I think. Hopefully it's. Forty five hundred dollars for T shirts and caps. That's a lot of T shirts and caps, chief.
You keep that last year?
I know, that was last year. So you got, that was forty five hundred dollars in T shirts and caps last year. We're gonna get another forty five hundred dollars in T shirts and caps?
Uh, that's for anything like this, T shirt, cap. You know, I mean. Chief Baker gets, gets money for that too.
Let's focus on Chief McCollum, not Chief Baker.
Well, no, if, if you're gonna compare apples to apples, I mean, he, he likes uniform stuff out there too. So I mean. I, I should be able to, to buy stuff that people are gonna wear, right? To represent the department. And I don't see what the problem is.
I'm, I'm just asking the question. It's, it seemed like a lot of money for T shirts and caps.
Stuff's not cheap. We're working with two vendors right now to figure out who's gonna do it. Who's gonna do shirts for us?
I'll tell you, I, I don't have a problem with that. We have a volunteer company. And if it's something that we can provide to volunteers for uh, shirts and caps and stuff. Uh, I'm in favor of that.
I appreciate your comments.
And so we can uh. I, I had, I ju, I just questioned it. I didn't have a recommendation per se unless somebody else does.
Uh, that's my development.
And then, um. Oh. You seem to have like three generic lines for. Replacement and repair of. Equipment. You have, you have a, a line, replacement and repairs to appliances for thirty five hundred dollars. You have a line for replacement and repair of hand tools as needed. And replacement of equipment and offsite cleaning for thirty five hundred dollars. It's, it just. Seems like awfully redundant repair and replacing of stuff. Three separate lines totaling eighty five hundred dollars.
Well, one appliance could cost you anywhere from twenty five hundred dollars up above that thirty five hundred dollar line. So if we get into appliances damaged and can't be repaired. That line's probably shot just about. If it can be repaired. We'll still have money there.
What, what's an appliance?
An appliance, Rich, is anything that's connected to the rig. You know, like in your suction, I mean, at, at your portal, at the pump, you're opening up, you're attaching a five inch to it, you'll get water. That's an appliance.
Okay.
Because it's not part of the truck. It's, you take it off. It's also any walk away appliance like a portable hydrant. Or tanker shuttle.
Okay.
Or anything like that that you drop in the street, like a, like a, a gated wire or something, a big one.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what the appliance is on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't see a line for dress uniforms. Where do your dress uniforms come? What line?
BVFD Inc. Well, ask the town for anything. Nothing for our dress uniforms. So that's what I was explaining. If you wanna get shirts like this for people, or T shirts, or caps, or knit hats. You know, maybe, maybe some pants depending on where they're going. Are they going to school? Do I want it to look professional? You know, that's where it all comes from. Cause BVFD is buying the dress uniforms.
That's nice.
And the badges. And everything goes with it. All the collars, everything, outplays for, you know, nice.
So anybody else have any questions, recommendations?
No, sir.
No, sir. So if my math is correct. Somebody can double check me. We're gonna recommend the bottom line uh, uh, on this account, the two oh two account be reduced by a total of eleven thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
Coming out of seventy eight nine sixty six? I believe.
No.
No.
No, coming out of ninety thousand.
No, coming out, coming out to.
Oh.
Oh, coming out to. Well, did that number again, Doug, please?
Seventy eight nine sixty six.
Everybody agree with the math? Anybody disagree with the math?
Eleven thousand four hundred and ninety dollar difference, just like you said. I agree.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to fund the two oh two account in the amount of seventy eight thousand nine hundred and sixty six dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
I'm sorry?
Does Doug have the calculator for grand total?
Oh, no, I didn't, uh, I didn't run the totals. We gotta do that whole thing.
Oh. Doug, can I grand total it? Start with seventy eight thousand nine sixty six for the two oh two?
Yeah.
Uh, sixteen thousand three hundred for the two oh seven?
Yeah.
Seventy three oh seventy six for vehicle make.
Oh, seventy six forty.
I do wanna make a point for that too. It was um. A motion to do seventy three oh seven six without the forty cents. Is there a way that we can amend that? Because the forty cents is still there.
Where's forty cents?
There's forty cents. On the last.
You didn't include it when you hit the.
Under vehicle maintenance, there was a motion for the total of seventy three thousand and seventy six dollars without the forty cents. The forty cents is still there. We could.
Where, yeah, but where is the forty cents?
It was in the total to begin with.
Proposed, and has proposed them.
But it's not on the one that Brad compared.
But let's just.
Well, it's on the one I compared that I gave to Brad.
I'm not gonna argue, I'm not gonna argue about forty cents, let's, we'll make a motion to fund the vehicle maintenance account in the amount of seventy-three thousand seventy-six dollars and forty cents.
Give me that number again, seventy-three?
Seventy-three thousand seventy-six dollars and forty cents.
Okay. Let's. Use an education.
Use an education, we made no change, we recommend the funding, uh, the three oh one account in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars.
I get, let's see what Doug gets. Right. And what do we do on professional services? That's state the same.
Professional services, we recommended no change.
No change.
Uh, so twenty-two thousand eight hundred.
Right. All right, let's see what, okay, so I get two hundred seventeen thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents.
We're good, right?
We're good at this.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, and I just need a second for the motion for the amendment, uh, citing the forty cents.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor of the forty cents?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just to save you guys, I mean, that's tedious, but it's fine.
All right, so a motion to recommend a total budget for the Bethel Fire Department in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Two seventeen one.
Two seventeen one forty-two forty.
Forty.
I, I may not a hundred percent go to bat for you on the forty cents.
Well, then it's coming out of your pocket. If there's quarter right now, it's gonna be ten cents.
Maybe, yeah, all right, they recommended dime for me to listen.
I'll give you a dollar.
Matty's gonna give you a dollar to cover it right now.
Yeah, it's scary.
I want the change. He's not screaming like that.
Um.
Yeah.
We gotta talk about his capital budget. I got a lot of questions on your account.
There's only three items, it's a lot of questions.
I understand, you only have three items, but, uh, none of those three items in your, are in your ten year capital plan this year. I don't have. You, you're. You're, uh. Hurst Tools are actually. In. Twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine budget. And you have no request in your, uh, capital budget for Paratec Tools.
No, because it came to light that we needed to finish what we're doing and so I submitted it. I got a price. That's what's, what's there, that's why I made sure you gentlemen have copies tonight. Reversed equipment, I think is, is, is a good thing to do, it gets us down to some line tools left just on the rescue truck. It gets them totally off of the squad, and they'll give us two full sets of hydraulics that you can just pick up out of the rig and walk away with, you go wherever you gotta go. With spare batteries.
So you're proposing with replacing the hydraulic tools completely, taking them off the rig?
Take them, take them off squad five.
Mm-hmm.
Which will also open up a compartment for us to move around, stuff and store it a little bit better, where it's not stuffed in there.
Do you have hydraulic on any other rigs?
Rescue one, and, and it'll take weight off of the truck also, so it'll take some weight off. Cause eventually they're all gonna go.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's my, that's my issue, is they're gonna go, I would rather replace them now than wait till they, till they're no longer supported, that, that's the term Hurst uses. They'll no longer support them, so like I said, we've already had one ram go, there's another one that he's already told us they'll no longer support if something happens to it. And. You know, the, the, the other tools are older, those are older tools, so eventually they're gonna say, you know what, we're not gonna support you either. It also will help us maintenance wise actually get that yearly figure that you saw there tonight down. It will get the yearly figure for her service down. And then all we'll have to do, basically, again, and check every year, what we will have to do is make sure we budget forward for replacement batteries. They're already on a next generation battery with the, with these tools now that I'm looking to get. So, you know, we'll, we'll have a better idea between us and Stony Hill when batteries will no longer take a charge and you'll have to replace them. It will know the cost and that'll, that'll have to be definitely something line item in the budget, where you guys know exactly what it is.
All right, well, yeah, so my, my only point was, is. You have this in, in your ten year budget, the hydraulic rescue tools for the twenty-eight, twenty-nine fiscal year. We kinda jumped the gun a little bit and went ahead and, uh, recommended you to buy some stuff for the rescue truck last year. So we're, in my opinion, we're kind of ahead of the eight ball on the, on the hydraulics.
Well, as Brad explained to me, the capital plan, which we've gone to a five year plan with this commission, Brad wanted it back to ten, so it's back to ten. And he told me that all that could be moved around if need be, so I just felt, you know what, let's move it up to this year. And see what we can do, maybe it comes out of CNR, maybe it comes out of ARPA, it's, you know what?
You gotta remember, we also recommended two ladder trucks and, and a chief's vehicle.
I understand.
Under that in the capital budget.
I understand.
So as of right, as of right now. How old are the Hurst Tools on the, on squad five?
Oh, those, those are the old, I can get you the dates on those, Commissioner, I can get you the dates.
But they work. They work.
Still work.
The first, the first truck out the door on a, on a, on a wreck is, is a rescue, right? And on the rescue truck, you have what?
We had.
It's been a while I looked at your trucks, I don't remember.
We have some line tools and we have a full set of hydraulics, so we have a big ram, a small ram.
Right.
A cutter and a spreader.
And you also have Stony Hill coming. With dirt.
If there's a confirmed extrication.
Firm extrication, Stony Hill's coming too, then you have, then you have on the squad.
Right.
Another set of Hurst Tools.
We have a full complement.
And then is there any other pieces of equipment they have, a Hurst Tool on it?
The squad is our mutilated, the squad is our mutilated engine, so if that goes anywhere outside of Bethel. It's self-sufficient in Bethel, but if it goes outside of Bethel, six does not go mutilate typically unless they specifically request it, that's the squad.
Right.
Squad. Is a true squad, it has truck company tools, extra saws, hooks, et cetera, and it has the rescue companies though, so they can go anywhere and get them, like. They went over to Danbury, what, last week? And they were there and they could go anywhere and do what, do whatever was needed, if they were gonna park. But my, my whole thing here is that they're self-sufficient here about, you know, it's nice to have that. Where we can send the older truck out of town and I can keep the newer one in town.
Yeah, personally, I mean, with the, with the complete set of hydraulics that we got for the rescue truck last year, I, I, I'd rather just see us replaced, you know. By the tool and the time as, as they fail, I mean, I think there's no shortage of Hurst Tool inventory in this town, for sure.
Well, not right now.
I think you're better off replacing all of it and be done with it, and I'll get you, I'll get you a full list of what's on that rig in the years. You know, my other thing is, as I told you before, is safety. And with the cost of gear now, I don't want any of that hydraulic fluid spilled on any of that gear we're buying. Cause if they can't clean it, guess what? We don't get it back. They don't say, oh, we can't clean it, and here it is, they don't give it back to you, they can't.
But you're not, you're not indicating to us that you're gonna remove all the hydraulic equipment that's on the rescue truck?
Not right now, cause I'm sure you wouldn't, you wouldn't support that because that's probably twice as much money.
Well, no, it's, we've already replaced that equipment with the hydraulics, and we agreed that when we did replace that, that we were just gonna fade the old stuff out as it failed, not replace.
Well, I think the stuff on the squad needs to be replaced so that you still have a full set on the squad.
Have a full set of hydraulics.
Not on the squad, on the rescue.
I mean, on the rescue truck, you have a full set of hydraulics and you have a full set of hydraulics.
You want me to take the hydraulics off that if we do the squad, I'll do that for you, whatever you guys want, you guys control that, I don't. No, I'm just talking to you, I'm just saying, I, I don't control that, you guys gotta tell me what you want.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I just think, I mean.
Personally, I. Got two questions.
We got, we got a lot of Hurst Tool equipment in this town, a, a real lot.
A lot.
Too much.
I don't think so, I've been to extrications where we've used just about everything.
Yes, we have, but we still have them in the town.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I mean, I, I have no reluctance of any of the Hurst Tool equipment being used.
When a motor failed, Chief, remember that?
Yes, sir, I have a lot of hope here.
I remember when that failed.
Yes.
We have two motors on the rescue truck.
So, you know, me, me personally, me personally, I would recommend. If you wanna put this, I mean, you're hitting us now with fifty thousand dollars right now, I recommend you put it in you for your next year's budget? Next year's budget, so the town is fully aware of what Bethel Fire Department's gonna be asking for to replace. The Hurst Tool equipment on your squad five, not right now.
Well.
Not right now. Let me ask a question, did, on the rescue truck, didn't we buy a couple different pieces of the hydraulics?
What, what was done was, we were short a ram. Stony Hill got it and we got it, Stony Hill got one of them, we got the other one because they were short one size, we were short the other size. So you gentlemen agreed to buy one of each, one went to Stony Hill, one went to us, so that we both have one full set of hydraulics, which is a cutter, a spreader. A large rim and a small rim, that's what each department has for a maintenance on their rescue truck.
That's where the battery operated.
Right. For hydraulics.
We never, we never got rid of any of the hydraulic stuff, where the plan was just to phase it out.
I thought they were gonna, yeah, phase it out, out of the truck and that would give another compartment in the rescue truck.
Yeah, yeah, no, they never did that, they just adding to it, yeah, nothing, nothing has failed yet, so they haven't removed.
Well, I had, yeah, there was a ram, a ram or something. I got another one that he's telling me won't support it here, so I don't know what's coming this year, what's up, I don't know. It seems like one a year, it just happens, it is what it is.
You know, I, I, I'm gonna make a comment, you know, the board of selectmen and the board of finances is gonna look at this very diligently. Because we're asking for so much more.
Yes.
I would rather get a truck.
I mean, I think we'd all agree that, that getting two ladder trucks is, is a priority versus more Hurst Tools right now, yes? I mean, yes, we would love to have all of it, sure, of course we would.
Not now.
But can we afford two ladder trucks, a chief's car and another full set of Hurst Tools all this year? I, you know.
Again, it's up to you, gentlemen, I just put it forth and there it is.
Me personally, I would put it in for you next year's.
That's me being transparent.
Budget, operating budget, put that in, put it in, but you got too much other stuff going on here.
It's the same thing with the Paratec equipment, it's, that finishes what we've been building for a couple of years now. I'm not really sure what's, with that, if they're done yet or not, but that will finish what we need to have the full set the way we planned it out.
Yeah. All right, so Chris, I'm not familiar with it, can you enlighten me, what are the Paratec?
The Paratec, the Paratec is all the, all the struts, Rich, and all the related equipment.
For lip thing.
For.
No.
Uh, basically for racing and for, for stabilizing.
Okay.
And Stony Hill is getting the same stuff so that we all masked again, so that we match, cause that's one thing that you guys have fluid, this one is actually, you wanna have the same type of equipment.
From the town.
Okay. And then the tires are in there, cause Brad told me to put the tires there.
Yeah, the tires, the tires, I don't think we have a problem, cause that's what we told last year and that's what we'll.
All right, so let's address that, let's address that, that's easy.
That's the last truck, is, is, is the latter.
All right, let's, let's address that, it's easy, it's not actually in your capital plan, and we talked about that earlier, Chief Engineer's gonna get it off his whiteboard and into a paper copy, go forward.
Brad told me to put it in, put it in there.
Let's recommend that the town funds. The amount of seven thousand dollars to replace ten tires on the ladder truck out of the capital budget.
Second that.
All those in favor of funding the amount of seven thousand dollars out of the capital non-recurring account for ten tires on the truck one?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Brad wanted the date on that, that's why I let you know that they actually do expire in July.
Okay.
Because he wanted to know how soon, I think, he was gonna be authorizing the money to be spent, which is gonna be right away once the new budget is in place in July.
Okay. Never know, maybe there's some money that's on the issue.
I don't think so.
All right.
So getting back to the Paratec.
Paratec, yeah.
You currently have some, you don't have the full.
Dave can explain that to you, that's why he's here.
We actually bought some of the Paratec stuff through the ARPA.
Okay.
We didn't have enough ARPA money to get all of it, so what we did was we split the order in half, and we bought the first half with the ARPA money, the second half is called the gold struts. They're for larger SUVs, pickup trucks, buses, stuff like that, stabilize them, so if they're tipped down our side, we can put these yellow struts underneath them and they'll support the bus. Or a truck, or a larger vehicle, the highway kit we have now will not support like a truck or a bus.
Does Stony Hill have any of that particular equipment?
They do not have any of the gold stuff, but they are in the process of getting the highway kit, which we, same kit that we have.
We just recommended that the, get the highway kit out of the capital.
I think that was for CNR, yeah.
Yeah, we just recommended it, uh, last week.
Yep.
Like I said, we're trying to, to math and have one big full set for the town of Bethel.
Now that, can I ask a quick question, that highway kit is part of this? Request here?
We have, we have the highway.
Oh, you have the highway?
Yeah, we already have.
Yeah, we have that, Stony Hill's getting, we have, so the, the gold strut would be the next thing they'll, they'll get too. That's what we're, we're looking to get now is the gold struts, which complete the set. A lot of that stuff could have been used, Rich, out in Stony Hill when we had the trench collapse. Because you can, you can have it this way, you can have it this way, it does the same thing.
Yeah.
You know, you, you extend them and they're locked in and that's that.
Definitely the question that's sending you down.
No.
Yeah, yeah, your thoughts?
That would be the supplement from there, from the state, they are.
Yeah, they're the.
I see it's at twelve thousand dollar. They were, they were great out there. That's the current price the guy just sent it to us.
Yeah, like I said, my only issue is, you know, you're asking for this, you know, out of this year's capital request, and it doesn't show anywhere in your ten year capital request. It's, it's, it's almost like it's a, you know, it's, it's a new thought that just.
No, it came to light that, you know what, we got the highway kit, but we still need these, so we should put in for them, as, as I said, transparency is best for me, it's the way I've worked for three years here. Put it in front of you, you discuss it, you figure out what you wanna do. You know?
Let's go put in for the first half of the inside of ARPA money.
Into the ARPA, it was all.
We couldn't get it all in one shot.
I wouldn't mind it.
We got half in ARPA and we're, half, the other half been, I mean, I wouldn't mind if they could find that out of ARPA right now.
Twenty-three thousand dollars, they got one point one million left.
What's the remote placement kit, I'm looking it up, I'm not getting any. The, the remote placement kit is part of this, it's the biggest, single biggest line item in that, well. What's that, Dave? Multi-force remote placement kit, twelve thousand seven, twelve thousand seven hundred dollars of the twenty-three.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's part of the kit overall, you just have to look in the thing to see what it is.
What's the kit that you're having brought?
Multiplacement kit.
Multi-force. It's the most replacement kit.
It's the most expensive one there for the twelve grand.
Right. Cause we worked, we worked with the, with the guys, he actually came down and did demos. And explained to us what we could do with what, what we could get. And that was, he did the same thing with Stony Hill.
Right.
He took us all through the paces of, here's the equipment, here's the highway, the highway kit. Here's all the struts, the gold struts, here's the stuff that goes with the gold struts, you know, cause we, we did ask them, that's what they asked us, can we split it up and do two things, yeah.
They've got the answer.
Nice. I have a patrol, if you'd like to like one, right?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
So it's one neck, one, it's actually two airbags together with all the equipment.
That's it right there.
We used to set the bar, so we lifted that bumps for one shot and then put the gold struts to the side and we're able to lift it up. Two feet.
So this kit, the way it's priced out here, sort of a couple, doesn't make sense to get any of it.
No, it's, it's all, that's why I said it's all together, so we split it in half and got. The highway kit to begin with, with the plan to get this to. To finish the kit. To finish what we would need. And like I said, I believe Stony Hill is gonna do the same thing.
Aaron.
I I I had a motion or a recommendation to recommend seven thousand dollars to replace the tires in the truck.
We did that.
We did that, we.
I also recommended we uh buy a ladder truck for that department too.
Two.
Two, yeah. So.
Richie, as the select person. ARPA money is still left.
But there's our, our, uh, ARPA money, yes, left in the account, but. We had set aside a certain amount of for. Bethel Fire Department, Stony Hill Department. And they use that seventy five thousand.
We spent that, I got.
They spent that.
Three grand left of it spent. And then the EMS side of ours is is done. And I believe Stony Hill's all done.
Yeah.
I think both sides of their stuff.
Both of them.
Yeah.
There was a total hundred and fifty thousand for each department, for each EMS department.
Well, I would recommend that we defer the uh. The Hurst tool and the paratec tools to a future date. Unless the chief can find some money left over in his budget at the end of the year, uh, equipment supplies to buy some of this. With with the idea that we've already recommended a lad, two ladder trucks and a chief's vehicle and and some paratec uh struts for the. Stony Hill Fire Department, I just, I just can't see that any other recommendation making it. Pass the board of selectmen for the finance. We're we're talking like over four million dollars, which is the stuff that we've already recommended. Alright, so the motion is to fund or recommend a capital expenditure, you know, seven thousand dollars for.
Replacement.
A replacement of our trucks, tires.
And defer the.
And defer the. I first tool and paratec tools to a future date. Rich, seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Alright, where's my agenda? I'm so well organized there, as you can tell. In consideration of a proposed ex officio member to represent BFD. I'm gonna propose that we recommend chief McCollum as the ex officio member to represent BFD.
I'd second that if it's a motion.
Seconded my dog, is there any discussion on it? I hear no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So that means John and I sit at the main table and you guys.
Yes.
Well, it's alright.
You could have been sitting here before.
It's our recommendation to the selectmen that you be appointed as, you'll have to be, you'll have to be sworn in as an ex officio member, so. Once you're sworn in, then yes.
Right, but that still doesn't take care of the other issue.
No, it doesn't, it's not, it's not.
We're gonna get that issue fixed. Where there can be somebody here in my stead to speak about the fire and somebody here in John's stead to speak to Stony Hill Fire.
Of course.
Right.
We'll cancel the meeting and have a special meeting when you're here.
We 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 entertained, you know, your chief engineer and your. You know, we're operating pretty loosely.
There needs to be something in writing that says you'll do that, that's my point.
They have to change the order.
Because, right, because the way the order is written is pretty specific, as we, as we know.
And and it'll probably go to the charter revision and be put into the charter in the future, but. That'll take a long.
I agree.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.